Okay, so we do not have mics up here, so we're going to extra-
We don't have microphones.
So, we're going to ask for extra quiet in the audience, you can hear us. Okay, with that, I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the goodwill of the Republican Party and this world.
Thank you, before we move to public comment, we actually have a couple subsequent items from Chair Chadwick, and you have your thing. The requested action is under consent. Move to discuss and/or take action to discuss a Trinity County Food Bank vehicle insurance, and find that the need to take immediate action came to the attention of the Board subsequent to the agenda being posted. The urgency is, the vehicle is without insurance.
You've got a motion to approve as presented?
All in favor?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes, subsequent. The request to action is move to discuss and/or take action on a letter to the site's project authority and Bureau of Reclamation. This is regarding withdrawal and reissuance of the draft site's reservoir project EIR/ES, and find that the need to take immediate action came to the attention of the Board subsequent to the agenda being posted. The urgency is that public comment period is closing on January 7th, so this would be something I would like the Board to consider today. Okay, you've got a second?
You're my second, or are you?
I'm your second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright, so kind of council on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items that I need to bring on as an emergency basis. The first one relates to a closed session under existing litigation. It's the Wetlands Water District versus all persons interested. The information came to the attention of the Board after the posting of the agenda, and does require action prior to the next Board meeting. For that grounds the request to be added as an emergency. I do, but you want to do that one first?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, anyone opposed?
Thank you, and the second one relates to Agenda Item 2.26. That item was incomplete and requires additional information for the Board to take the appropriate action. I'm requesting that as an emergency basis, we adjust the language of that to include allowing a budget adjustment, giving appropriation to the transfer of funds, and authority to the CAO and/or auditor to complete the necessary budget adjustments. She's looking at me weird. Oh, is that the wrong agenda? I apologize, which one is it?
That's the only one she wanted, 2.26.
I apologize, I had the right item, it's 2.26, I just found it wrong. So, we require, and I'll do it again just to make sure the record is clear, we need a budget adjustment, giving appropriations for transfer of funds, and authority to the CAO and/or auditor to complete the necessary budget adjustments. Without those two steps, that agenda item can't go forward, and it requires immediate action prior to the next Board meeting, and the information came to our attention this then, which was after the posting of the agenda.
Come in.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved, alright. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to public comment, I'm sorry if you can't all hear me. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three units and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of the Board. When addressing the Board, please state your name for the record and address the Board as a whole through the Chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda, however, the Chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up schedule of the matter on a subsequent Board agenda. Good morning, Agent.
Good morning. Name Jim Stewall, I'm an Eddieport, California. I'm here to talk to the Board today about extortion, embezzlement, conspiracy of the Board of Chamber Supervisors to help in John Jelisich and PUD extort funds from the public that are unconstitutional, illegal, and no way should have been done on this Board Supervisors' agenda. I'd like to get this put on the agenda, just so we can hash it out in public hearing here, and make a date for a public hearing for it, and you could be failing to do that, and I've been up here, I think, 11 times now over the same issue, and I think it's time to put it before the Board. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tiffany Fraser-Hawkins. I'm here as the President of Leaderville, but also on behalf of the American Lung Association in California. We are the leader in lung health nationally, which is, sorry, lung health and lung cancer, which tobacco use is the number one cause. I'd like to share some news of action taken by our neighbors in the North State in passing policies that restrict the sale of labor tobacco products and include a tobacco retail licensing program that has funds for enforcement. So Shasta County is looking at adopting a policy that was just passed by Anderson, as well as Chico, Orling, Ridley, or the county of Mottock, all looking to pass those policies in January. This is following in the steps of Anderson, like I said, Altris, Sacramento, Levis, San Francisco, and over 30 other jurisdictions in California. This movement in policy is in response to the skyrocketing use of tobacco. The National Youth Tobacco Survey found that over 25% of high schoolers reported using tobacco products in the last 365 weeks. This is predominantly e-cigarettes, and this high use rate is typically because of the discreet nature of the tools that look like the USB drive, or a store that looks like a little highlighter, or devices like glue that just look like a pen. These devices also provide pods for e-juice that are in handy flavors. These flavors are things like gummy bears, peppermint, mango, and unicorn hoop. Unicorn hoop is actually named after the number one selling toy for toddlers last year, so there's pretty clear correlation as to who they're marketing these products to. So, these restrictions also include a tobacco retail license, which has four components, my laptop died on my way over here, so I can't read the components to you, but one of those components is a fee that would justify enforcement for the perpetuum of that policy. There's currently short-term funding that pays for enforcement of tobacco policies in Trinity County, that's to the Department of Justice. A tobacco retail license could extend that program passive features that already has. So the Partnership in Action for Trinity Health Coalition and the Tobacco for Trinity Program out of HRN have resources, including policy language, legal assistance, they can hand out public opinion polls, to help you if you are interested in passing a policy like this, which the Lung Association supports very strongly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to break myself from my job, and I'm here to discuss a dumb issue that we have in Heimpong. The dump has not been maintained since I was putting in there. Right now, there's currently three bins that are working, there used to be six. The dump gets full by 11, 12 o'clock, so the dump is shut down. It's only open one day a week, and if somebody's sick, or if there's snow on the road, Heimpong Dump doesn't get open. So, you've got to take all your garbage back to the house and figure out what you're going to do with it, keep the bears from getting in it, and scattering it all over the place. And, the problem's been going on for over two years. And, of them being closed whenever they want to. They're only open one day a week, and somebody has their garbage for the week, they take up their, you're closed. What are we supposed to do? Take it back home and let the dogs and the bears throw it around the yard the next week? I have a few reasons why you can't have somebody there every Saturday to run that dump. There's no excuse not to. And if you can't find an employee to do it, the person that's ahead of the fifteen-year old is absolutely jobless. And I have a petition here from everybody in Heimpong that is trying to get put on the agenda, so that we can discuss the ongoing problem in Heimpong about the dump, and see if we can resolve this issue. I try talking to them about it, and see if they don't care. They just want to do whatever they want to do, and they don't care what the people have to say. Well, it's taxpayer, I think the people in Heimpong have the right to know what's going to happen with the dump, and how it's going to get fixed, and how it's going to be taken care of. They're saying they're going to put these big upright bins, and you've got to drive up there and pick your garbage up and throw it up in, rather than back up and pick it off out of your tailgate and be all... Older people down there can't lift that garbage up and throw it in there. So you don't have somebody there to unload the garbage for people when you put these big high bins in there. So I'd just like to get this put on the agenda, and I'd like to submit this.
Actually, what I prefer is to have some overall picture, or guidance, or plan, that the county would be interested in fixing this situation, along with the situation in every other transfer station, probably throughout the county. I don't know about the rest of the county, but the two down south have the same problem. Hayport is not in the greatest shape at this point, but there doesn't seem to be any plan to move forward with fixing it. And here we have somebody who wants to take their garbage to the dump, the transfer terminal, instead of leaving it in the forest, like everybody threatens to, and on and on. So, what's the plan? Is there one?
Well, actually, we initiated a plan just a few board members, we're going to go and we increase the fees, so that's the plan.
That's the plan, but how's the money going to be spent?
Well, I'll have to-
And doing will those deadlines be if?
I do not have that answer for you right now, but I do present that to the Board.
So maybe that's a second meeting in January?
Sure, we have to do it.
As much money as I spend at the dump, for my yearly fee and what I pay on the week I did, it's half that price in ready, and they come and pick it up in the front yard, and they pick up your recyclables and everything else. It is almost cheaper for me to haul my garbage to ready than it is to pick it to the dump in Heimpong, and that's-
I'd have to disagree with you on that one, no it's not. And we are in a very specific situation up here regarding transporting our solid waste, and fulfilling the requirements for the state of California.
So we will have an update in the second meeting in January, on all landfill issues. So, thank you. Anybody else?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Tom Balacka, WRC. I wanted to start by saying, when I left my half-mile of not winter-maintained road last Thanksgiving, I was very pleasantly surprised to find when I got to the county road, which I know is on the low priority, already plowed, quite a severe snowstorm. I know that took a lot of effort and planning by our Transportation Department, and I know one of the favorite subjects to be pilloried up here is Rick Tippett, so I just want to say that I was oppressed by Department Transportation. In other news, I saw it in the Wall Street Journal last Monday. One of my classmates was honored on a full-page ad with some of my, some other veterans that were on championship NFL, Super Bowl teams. He was an honorary captain. Funny story about him, when I was in school, you know, I played football growing up, and the position of safety was always like, one of the smaller guys on the team got to play that. In high school, it was where the quarterback used to play on defense. As I got to college and professional level football, I realized that free safety is actually one of the hardest hitters on the team. Ronnie Locke comes to mind. At West Point, this guy was, we called that position an A-man. And my classmate Greg Gadsden played that well. Everybody at West Point's about the same size, so we had the hardest-hitting guy in that position. At graduation, my brother-in-law was looking through the yearbook, and all 1,000 of my classmates are in there, a little blurb in our picture, and he asked me, you know, if you were in a dark alley, which one of your classmates would you least like to run into? I said, "Well, they're all my friends, so I would be happy to run into any of them." He's like, "Alright, if you were in a dark alley, and you could have one of your classmates with you, who would you pick?" And I thought about it for a second, there was a couple of good candidates, but I said Greg Gadsden. And sure enough, he had his thumb on that, that guy's photo in the yearbook. So that's what I would say too. So, when I saw him at the last reunion, that answer is still true, even though, you know, he's in a wheelchair now, he lost both his legs in an IED in Afghanistan. I got too many true stories like that, been to too many funerals, but not see due processes or can't let that go. What happened at the last meeting with the Measure A, saw my Christmas card, I'm going to have to bite on this one. Thank you.
May I, anyone else for public comments? Alright, moving on to presentations under Board Supervisors, 1.1. Adopt a proclamation of appreciation honoring Dan Dill for his service to the people of Trinity County through Trinity County Collaborative Group as Ranger of the Mad River District and of the Six Rivers National Forest. As we know, we lost Dan this past August, and the collaborative and the Board wanted to do something in his honor, acknowledging his work with the collaborative. And I know we have a lot of collaborative members here. If you'd just raise your hand to show. So I just wanted to point out to the Board, you know, and a lot of these people meet every other month on a lot of issues for the past seven years, it was established in 2012. So, thank you for your tenaciousness and work with Dan Dill. I know we have Chester Trinity also here, who also has joined us over the years with the collaborative. With that, I will read this proclamation of appreciation, and then I will, I will open it under this issue, if anyone wishes to speak on behalf of their experience with Dan Dill. With that, the proclamation of the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity honoring Daniel Dan Dill for his service to the people of Trinity County through the Trinity County Collaborative Group as Ranger of the Mad River District and of the Six Rivers National Forest. Whereas in the fall of 2012, the Trinity County Collaborative Group hereby referred to as a collaborative established by the Trinity County Board of Supervisors as a joint effort between the Trinity County citizens, organizations, businesses, and government, and federal land management agencies to collaborate on the national resource land management and economic development approaches. And whereas the vision of the collaborative is to be an inclusive and successful natural resources, land management, economic development advisory group that supports safe and vibrant communities, thriving economies, and ecological resilience through sustainable resource use and stewardship practices. And whereas the mission of the collaborative is to create and recommend for implementation, natural resources, land management, and economic development strategies driven by local values and goals that, one, acknowledge the interrelation between community, economy, and ecology; number two, provide solutions for sustainable and resilient economic and ecological practices and projects; number three, foster a culture of stewardship; number four, improve our community, economy, and ecology; and number five, create a better place for future generations. And whereas Dan enthusiastically embraced the vision and mission of the collaborative through Dan's leadership, Dan embedded the spirit of the collaboration in the culture of the Mad River Ranger District, and was loved by his staff. Dan was effective in translating the complex ideas of the collaborative to reality on the ground. Dan's bigger-than-life personality always conveyed confidence and a willingness to be the first to try something new. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors, the County of Trinity honors the memory of Daniel Dan Dill for his leadership and skill in the collaborative conservation. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity creates the Dan Dill Collaborative Conservation Award to be awarded to the individuals or groups that emulate the vision and mission of Trinity County Collaborative Group. And furthermore, the Board of Supervisors posthumously presents the first collaborative conservation award to Dan Dill, duly passed and adopted on the 17th of December, 17th of December 2019, by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Trinity. So before I have a motion, I'd like to see if anyone else wants to comment on this. You don't have to, but since a lot of you made the trip, I wanted to make that an option for all of you. Anybody?
So, Pat, oh, anyway, at least I've got a big voice. So, Pat Frost with the Trinity County Collaborative Group, facilitation team. All we can really say is everybody's here, and I got messages from folks who are further away who could make it, that Dan will be sorely missed, but the collaborative is dedicated to continuing in that path that he helped lead us to, you know, with our other federal land managers. He, a lot really coalesced around the good work and the energy that he brought to us. He had a background in wildlife, he had industry background, and he was truly, you know, met every definition of a public servant. He got public in the public servant, and he'll just sorely be missed. And I don't know if anybody else has anything else to say. We'll present something to him, or his family, early next year.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else? I do want to also acknowledge Pat Frost and Kelly Sheen as our facilitators of the collaborative, and worked with Dan closely. Anybody else wish to comment? Alright, I'll bring it back to the Board, I assume.
Yes, sir.
Supervisor Five wants to weigh in?
Motion to approve as presented for Dan Dill, and I, before I get a second, I really do want to thank, thank him for the work he's done in the Mad River District, and hope, and would like to see it continue in that direction. Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Thank you.
Okay, please pull the Board. Supervisor Dill?
Aye.
Yes.
Supervisor Moore?
Aye.
Supervisor Travis?
Aye.
Supervisor Moore? Yes, thank you. Alright, thank you, everyone.
And thankful, thank you for all of you.
Alright, moving on to the second, all of the items, routine, non-controversial matters, and will be acted upon the Board by one rule call motion. A member of the Board, staff, or other members of the question either be pulled and considered accepted. Okay, Board members, well, I will, I will be pulling 2.8. Supervisor Chadwick? Supervisor Moore?
I assume we have to pull 2.26?
You don't have to pull it if you don't want to, but you're welcome to. The amendments are included now.
So the amendments?
The amendments, the urgency amendments aren't included in that item now, based on that that you approved to have it included. But you can pull it if you want.
Okay, we'll, we'll pull it.
Supervisor Finley, anything?
No, ma'am.
Supervisor Moore? Alright, with the majority in motion, the remainder of the-
Second.
Aye.
Sorry, hold the phones. Anybody from the public wishing to pull an item? Thank you. Supervisor Moore?
Aye.
Supervisor Moore? Alright. Item 2.8, authorize the Chairman to sign a letter supporting reauthorization of the Superior Schools and Fields. No fiscal impact. Once again, this is before us, as they make back east in Washington, try to renew, reauthorize these important funding sources for both county governments and schools. It was brought to my attention, it was kind of on the edge, but it did pass late last week, while this was in motion for our agenda. So, I'm still willing to send it, and also maybe put a thank you to the folks involved for passing, really, this is really important funding source. So, any comments on this?
So, did it pass both houses?
I believe so, but I will double-check on that. If it has both houses, I still would like to send, just change the wording to some more of a thank you kind of thing. And if not, then we're going to send it as it's, and change maybe the names. Any questions on that? Any questions, comments from the public? So that one, I'll double-check how it goes. Alright, Lady John? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? So moved. Item 2.9, adopt a resolution which authorizes the election official to conduct a special election consolidated with the general election on March 3rd, 2020. How are you going to take this item?
I'm happy to.
I know, I have a question.
I'm using the microphones. I'm happy to, this is an item from the Election Department. I did speak with our election official yesterday about it. What she wanted me to convey to the Board was that we have received several new items that are going to be going on this ballot, and so she is using this as an opportunity to remind the public and educate that this is going to be a consolidated election. We've already passed a resolution at the beginning of the election cycle to say the same thing, and this is again, just one of the end of it, to close it off and make sure that the public's very aware that we're holding a single election for this. So again, it's already been done, but this is more of an educational opportunity.
So, the reason I pulled it, and I appreciate that certification, three Board meetings ago, I believe, or three weeks ago, the Board was looking at a specific item to be put on the March election, and we were basically told that we didn't have time to have a special Board meeting, because we were at a drop-dead time zone. We weren't given the time parameters, and now it's three Board meetings later, and we're adding something. So, I know that, and I appreciate Shannon wrote a letter saying that she would be out of office today, and I was in meetings all day yesterday, so I wasn't able to connect. But, needless to say, we couldn't have a special meeting because there wasn't enough time, and now we're coming weeks after that, and there's time. So, it's conflicting information, and I would really appreciate the timeframe to know what the timeframe is, I'm getting, and I don't, I don't expect that of you today, but perhaps at our next meeting, there could be a timeline of when and the appropriate-
Absolutely happy to provide that. And typically during the election cycle, we do make a calendar in the beginning, which has all the dates, you know, E-minus dates, so we have those. It's my understanding that this item did arrive at the election department within appropriate time, and so it was automatically moved forward. This again, is not dealing with a timeline issue, this is just kind of a reminder and reinforcement that this is going to be a consolidated election. It's not approving the item for election, it's just approving the consolidation aspect of the election. But, I'm happy to invite that timeline, or have Shannon do it, who's the one that does keep that record in office.
So you can see a little bit of confusion among the public, where we couldn't allow for extra time, and now is it a matter of one that's being generated from the public with signatures, versus one that's come from another Board, a school Board that is bringing it forward?
Well, I don't want to speak for Shannon, because I want her to answer those questions, and she could come back. My understanding is that this item has been, was brought to the Election Department within the appropriate period of time, and that this is again, is separate from those timelines. This is more of a reminder that it's a consolidated election, which has a completely separate timeline than an actual item would. But again, I want, I want Shannon to speak to that, since it's her department.
Alright, any other questions? Can I help you with the poll? Any questions from the public?
Kate Graves from Lewiston, before you start, my time, I have a point of order, because I feel that not only was this misrepresented on the agenda, it was just also misrepresented, I'm saying that wrong, by your county council. This is not a reminder that it's a consolidated election, you actually have a resolution in the backup pertaining to this item. And it's about the bond for the high school area, so that really shouldn't be hanging in the air like that. So, to what the item actually is in the backup, which is the bond, and I will remind the board that your own resolution states that, in one of the paragraphs, "And to provide for the contents of campus and return of the election," because to remind you guys again, you are the election board. It also says in here then, in your own resolution, that you provide for, providing by law for holding elections related to the questions of whether the bond district shall be issued and sold. So you guys are actually deciding whether this bond will go on the ballot. If the elections officer failed to appear, then you most likely should table this. All the deadlines for this have not been met. There was a letter requesting public information from Attorney David E. Kenny Esquire, he let the school board know that the notice of election is erroneously addressed to qualified voters of the unincorporated area of Trinity County. The notice is supposed to be addressed to the qualified voters of Trinity Alps Unified School District. So what I'm reading to you now is an opinion, this is law, that isn't being followed. The ballot question also required the state to state the district will perform, performance and financial audits, and that was not done. Just going through this really quickly, because I don't get much time to do this, so you guys just be surprised by the rest of the laws that aren't broken. The election is ordered, the county superintendent, not the board. The school board does not order the election. Let's see, election code 2.5, or, sorry, 5321, and that's in the education code. Repeatedly, it says that the county superintendent of schools, 5322 also. You guys need to go through and read the code that they cited in their resolution and their bond, because they are mistaken in multiple areas. And if they think they can repay debt using the bond money, that is also a reason. Election code 12112, at least 90 days and not more than 120 days before the day fixed for the general election. The elections official of the principal county shall publish a notice of the election once in the newspaper of general circulation and published in the district. That did not happen. They missed the deadline. And to say that, you know, Shannon's not here, and she's just going to do it, is par for the course, and this thing violates the law almost completely.
If you read the law, and as we've done, 88 days go prior to the election. Today is the 79th day, so you guys, I mean, if you want to put this on the November 1, put it on the November 1.
If I could briefly respond, the question before the board is whether you want to have a consolidated election. That's the only question before the board. Everything else is a different item, so I just want to make sure we keep focused on this. And as I said before, this resolution passing to authorize consolidated election has already been done. Shannon's putting this back on, from what I understand, for the purpose of just reinforcing it, since we do have a lot of items coming up on this next election.
I am confused by that. If we've already done this, then why, why are we reinforcing it?
Because they changed it.
That's what I would be questioning for Shannon, I do not know. But again, it's merely consolidating the election, our election is consolidated.
And we do have the superintendent.
Janie, can I be told?
Sorry.
No, so we are addressing one item here today that would affect you, 2.9, the elections official to conduct an elected, consolidated election, I should say, which involves the bond measure that your board passed, and this is a formality, is my understanding, so I, there's not a lot of wiggle room on this, but since you're here, do you have any comments on this issue?
On the bond?
Yeah, I mean, how it's presented to us on the board, there's only one really simple question, and Margaret, do you want to just go over that for Janie, since he missed a little bit earlier?
In terms of what the matter before the board is today?
Yes, exactly.
The matter before the board today is whether you're holding, well, actually, it's a resolution consolidating the election, to put it on with a general election held on March 3, 2020.
And if I understood you correctly, typically, we didn't even have to do this.
No, we do have to do it, but we have already done it. So this matter was done, one moment, I'll find it.
The resolution was submitted to the county registry before December 4, and we approved the resolution on November, a different resolution, November 5, I believe.
Yes.
And before we go, Mr. Green, I understand the resolution that we're passing, why do we have the other resolutions from the school district, under tax statement as part of this backup? Because if you're stating this is not part of what we're doing, so I think this is really massive confusion to the public that we have these other things clouding the issue.
I absolutely agree with you, and I apologize for not catching that and removing it. Again, I think it was because it was the last one that came in. The thought was just to make sure it's where, typically, we do, every time we get a new one in, she, she'll do, or clerk will do a resolution that just reiterates this fact, and we did that for the last one, I think because this was the last one in, we just did it for that. But you're correct, it does create massive confusion, I apologize for that.
All right, so, we had some technical questions of staff. Mr. Green, you can say, you can public comment this item or not, it's up to you.
Public comment, as a superintendent of the district, I can't promote or, sorry. Janie Green, Superintendent of Trinity Alps, as our Board of Trustees have moved forward to put a bond on the ballot to assist a school in rehabilitating mitigation to airborne toxins, as Superintendent of the district, I cannot promote or be against the bond. So at that point, once it hits the election office, I'm not allowed to comment.
Gotcha, okay, fair enough.
So, thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you were able to, I just get to know the.
Sure, there's a lot I'd like to say, actually.
Of course. Okay, anybody else from public comment wishing to speak on this item? All right, so you now bring it back to the board.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve 2.9 as presented, to adopt a resolution which authorizes the election official to conduct a special election consolidated with the general election on March 3, 2019, so we have an election.
All right, thank you, Bill. Any conversation, discussion?
Can I request, after we vote on this item, that, that council give us a little bit of feedback on if people have a problem with the item, what their process would be?
Sure. All right, so, let me go up, please. Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Moore?
Aye.
Supervisor Grove?
Aye.
Supervisor Chavez?
No.
Supervisor Morris? Yes. Okay, so to Supervisor Morris, what's this?
So, council, we have people that are claiming that the election, not what we were, the resolution from the Trinity Alps, it's not a legal resolution, and that it may more a illegal ballot measure. What's the process, or what's their recourse to bring this up? Because this is obviously not the item to do that in.
So the opportunity to comment on the legality, it would have been with school districts when they passed their resolution to bring it forward as a, as a item, and I can't speak to that, because I didn't intend that that would be the appropriate opportunity to speak to it. And of course, there's all the legal remedies that come with any item that goes on the ballot that they have available to them. But this board is, again, this is not, this board is not the one that's bringing forward this item, it's the school district, and so they would have been the appropriate venue for, for individuals to comment.
So once it hits the ballot, and it's, there's just ramifications that, I mean, I don't know how that process would work, I guess you'd have to follow security.
Correct, so they have a complaint about it, there's, it's left a legal option.
Okay, so would be brought against who?
Depends on what the item is, what their concern is, but likely the school district, if it's based on the substance of it, or if it's on the processes.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the wide berth on that item.
And if I can also comment on that, just to make sure that we're not giving out legal counsel to the person who just left.
No, I, we do not provide legal counsel to third parties, but the question was process, and there are legal processes, if you're concerned.
Between now and March, is what you're saying?
Again, I won't, I won't give details on that, but there are legal processes, individuals should obtain their own counsel.
Got it. All right, so moving on to another item that was pulled. The next one we have, you said?
2.26.
All right. Adopt a resolution which authorizes and directs execution of a temporary transfer of funds from the county treasury pool to the Trinity Alps Unified School District. An improvement agreement with the Trinity Alps Unified School District, which authorizes the temporary transfer of funds, and authorize the treasurer or CAO in her absence to sign the temporary transfer agreement related to financing documents, subject to routing as performing content, one known to be repaid by the school district within four months plus interest.
And then I'm sure there was subsequent items added to that?
Right.
Which was included, allowing the budget adjustment to give appropriation for the transfer of funds, and giving the CAO and their authors the authority to complete the necessary budget adjustments.
Okay. All right. Janie?
Thank you.
I think we just, we appreciate your efforts to help our school district, and maybe just a little description of what's going on.
So, what you have before you is a temporary transfer of funds, and so I'd like to stress that fact that it is a temporary request. Early this summer, and for those of you that aren't aware, the staff detected serious levels of mold in some of their facilities, so they, they did act quickly, they brought in portables, and they turned the parking lot into a temporary school site. When the testers came in, they detected that the, there was unsafe levels of black mold. They responded by searing off those areas from the public. They, these were unforeseen circumstances. Typically, the school district passes their budget in May, due to these unforeseen circumstances, they, this created a shortfall. This request is something that would be from allocated funds, it's not new funds, these are not funds that are basically part of our budget now. They have done their due diligence in regards to cutting costs as much as possible, from cutting overtime and any unnecessary expenses. The two main issues that we have are that, the immediate one being that there's a cash flow issue, and then also the rehabilitating and eradicating the mold issue. What you have before you is regards to the cash flow issue. They have pursued all options in regards to funding that they can. There is a state hardship program, but honestly, that's something that they have to jump through a lot of hoops, and they've basically been told that they would not qualify for that. They did submit applications, and part of the process would be that they would have to, you know, they've already selected someone to assist them, and they obviously went to the ballot for bonds, and so they're going through everything that they can to try to be reimbursed. We do have, there are provisions of the California Constitution, Section 6, Article 16, and education code 42120, they provide provisions for basically a temporary financial protection in the event that the school district runs into a situation where they're unable to meet their, their obligations. I would like to also point out, there's Ed Code 42127, that particular code, that establishes criteria for the amount that they're required to keep in their reserves. That is part of the reason that I am supportive of this particular option for them, is that they, they're not allowed to, you know, in their terms, it's ADA, but it's not, it's average daily attendance, and so that kind of drives where, what they're required to keep in their reserves. So, I like the, the TCOE does not just serve as Trinity Alps, they serve as all the school districts in our county, and so that could potentially put them in a bad situation if there was another, I mean, we've had several emergency situations with the other school districts, and so this temporary transfer, it's utilized, the purpose of it basically is so that, that helps to eliminate some of the short-term funding that they might be required to do. Some of you are familiar with TRAN, so that's Tax Revenue Anticipation Note. TRANs do have a purpose, that they do incur really significant costs, you may be familiar with some of the costs that we've incurred when we had TRANs before. With this particular situation also, there's, there's timeframes that we're up against, and so the school district is, this, we are, it is a crucial timeframe for them. So, I honestly don't believe that they could meet the TRAN requirement anyhow, in order to, even if they were able to do that. Physically, it's not a prudent decision for them either, because that's, I mean, you're probably looking at, honestly, about $60,000 for a TRAN. As treasurer, it is my responsibility to safeguard the, the funds of the county. A lot of people aren't aware that school district is a part of the treasury pool, so I like to point that out. With them being part of the pool, we're able to do things that we might not normally otherwise do, because, for instance, if, you know, as an individual, my dad might go out and invest $10,000, but because we have a larger pool, we're able to go out and we're able to invest larger portions. So I am in support of doing something that's not going to have any negative impact on the county pool, any of the treasury pool participants. A repayment for a temporary transfer would be at whatever the most recent treasury pool rate is, plus 10 basic points. That tends to be kind of a fair rate for working with someone that's within the pool. We, our typical rate's a little over 2.5, close to that, is what we typically, our average rate is. I feel that the approval of this resolution would provide a critically needed resource for Trinity Alps. It's to meet their short-term cash flow needs, it's, you know, it is caused by unforeseen findings. The resolution, this resolution would allow the county to provide that necessary bridge for Trinity Alps until they can meet their additional revenues. This is something that we anticipate the funds would come in, they would reimburse us, it's a simple thing, and they're, they are looking to address the, the other issues as far as rehabilitating the buildings, which, that's good news, it's not complete demolition, so that is something that they are addressing on their own. So, with that, I do have this difference in it with me, also, if you have any questions for me, I wanted to, but I am in support of this, and I wanted to bring this to you.
So, in essence, you're, I mean, obviously, the property tax that is coming in now, and they do certainly see their portion of it in a couple months, this is just basically fronting the money that they would give anybody, in short, really. Okay. And, and I thank you again for working with them on this circumstance. Supervisor Grove?
Actually, the property tax question was the one that this just answered.
Okay. Anybody else on board, before the republic? I do, so if the money is theirs, and it's going to them anyway, it's just, you're, you're fronting it, there's no collateral, there's, there's no asset, there's, there's nothing. It's, it's money that is already allocated to them, you're just giving them a head start, and then it comes back.
Essentially, yes, because they're, all the funds that we have in our budget, are, are basically, they're spoken for, but this is allowing them to meet their cash flow needs because their revenues won't come in until after, they'll have, they have the need prior to when they'll receive the revenue, so that, that's.
All right, anyone from the public, questions? All right, with that, I will bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve as presented. Let's do the group as presented.
I'm the second. Okay. Just finished, thank you.
And you mean cash?
Two point two six. Do we have a subsequent?
Subsequent.
Nobody, you didn't talk to the other.
Okay. Five seconds?
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Gross?
I'm.
Supervisor Brown?
I'm.
Supervisor Miller?
I.
Supervisor Chai?
I.
Supervisor Moore?
Yes.
All right, thank you both.
Thank you very much for working on this.
I also want to like to say anything before you vote, because I don't want to change your vote, but I'd also like to thank not only Terry, like Angie and our department heads and their financial representatives, because we're able to do this because we're keeping such tight records that we know exactly where every dollar is going to be spent over the next, this week, because of that, we're able to do this and be a partner in the community.
Great, thank you, and I know you've been involved too, Dr. Coons, so thank you. Since consent is over, I don't think we have another item that was pulled, do we? Yep. All right, then we'll take a five-minute break. Okay, moving on to reports and announcements, reports from department heads, anyone wish to join us today?
Good morning. I'm Shannell Sinear, Director and Lieutenant Manager. Just wanted to update you, so two things that the department is really focusing on, it's very labor-intensive, but we are working diligently. One is, we are trying to get in the payroll system, the 2020 medical premium changes uploaded, they will be reflected on the December payroll, so I'm hustling for that. And then the ACA tax required 1095 forms that have distributed in January, so we're going to be working on those, where we have to carefully read every employee's form to make sure everything is accurate, so that's where we're going to be very in paper for the next three days.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Farzad, Director of Health and Services. It is a great pleasure, I wanted to introduce you to our new Veteran Services Officer. This is Jennifer Doss, and I asked her to come up and give a little information, introduction to you.
Great, welcome.
Good morning, thank you. My name is Jennifer Doss, as you said, I'm very honored to be the Veteran Service Officer right now. I can't wait to go out and meet especially some of the rural veterans. I'm a 12-year Army veteran and an Iraq War veteran, and I know firsthand how frustrating and confusing the VA is, so I'm trying to helping them navigate that.
Great.
Welcome. Her position is a part-time physician at this time. Her schedule is going to be Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays at the office of the CD Hall. We will update the posting of the doors that are open, and we did update the website, so it is an absolute pleasure. She's anxious to get going, she will be working with Shasta County Veterans Service Officer for mentoring until she gets her certification. There is a lengthy certification process, but she's anxious and we're anxious to get going, so we can serve. But she is, you know, being contacted by our local veterans, getting phone calls, and our agency is sending her referrals, so we're up and running.
Great, okay. Chair of the booth.
Yeah, I also wanted to ask Marcy Kudsel, she's our Public Health Liaison Director, to give you some public health updates that are happening in the agency.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I want to share with you some of the processes in public health right now that we're working on, and some of our accomplishments. We were able to provide flu vaccination to 200 students through many schools in our areas in partnership with the schools. We also administered 126 flu vaccines to our populations at our drive-through clinic, and we have also distributed roughly 100 vaccinations through our public health clinic, as well as the employee health fair. We pushed out vaccine partners for them to administer to their populations, various clinics throughout the county, in order to try to vaccinate as many Trinity County residents as possible. We've also received $171,000 grant through the California Department of Public Health to fund our Trinity opioid safety coalition for the next three years. Those activities through the coalition include reduction in overdose deaths through distribution of Narcan, as well as preventing substance use in our youth, as well as increasing medically-assisted treatment for our populations. And also, one of the most recent revelations was, we are, we're recruiting for a nurse to fill the vacancy that we recently had, and so we are changing the hours of our public health clinics. Instead of having them once a week, we're moving them to once a month. We are also simultaneously working with clinics and providers to ensure access to our populations to be provided the vaccinations that they would get at our clinics. Public health is a true safety net, so we don't want to supplant what our clinics do. However, we do want to make sure that our populations have access to immunizations. So the clinics, we have a list of dates that I'll be sharing with you. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Marcy.
In addition, as you may know, I am on the Board of Commissioners for Partnership California, we manage our Medicare population. It was mentioned at our last board meeting in Rudding that our hospital was awarded the Quality Improvement Program Award. There were 10 hospitals recognized, and I believe this is the second time out of three or four years that we've been recognized, so that is something you'd love to, and appreciate to know, that the performance measures that they need to meet are in accordance to, you know, state standards from Department of Healthcare Services. So it was, it was really nice to see the recognition that they deserve, so. And I think that's all, if you have any other questions? I probably should make sure you know, I know I've emailed you already, I have announced my, my future plans for retirement with the county. It will be in May next year, May 2020.
Nice.
So Shelley and Dr. Coons is working on recruitment, it may happen in January, February, so I just wanted to make sure, give you that announcement. I've been working for the county for this time for 24 years, and it's been an absolute honor and privilege to have that.
I'm trying to give you the eagle eye to get over.
Yeah, well, thank you. And again, I look forward to, you know, working when it's commenced with everyone, it's been a wonderful journey.
Well, thank you. Yeah, thank you, thank you, and we hate to see you go, but we understand.
Thank you.
You don't understand.
Yeah, oh, I do.
Morning, just wanted to let the board know, as you're probably already aware, I'm sworn in, that's the County Engineers Association, the California President for the upcoming year, so I'll be happy working with that group on issues related to California. And it is a great opportunity to address small county issues that we have in transportation, a very nice honor for a county of 14,000 people in a state of 40 million to get to represent that group. We are, I will keep the board aware of some of the things that we will be doing, we are making a trip to Washington DC at the end of February to meet with FEMA and FHWA to talk about ER and the FEMA program. We're also meeting with folks from federal lands to talk about the federal lands access program and some of the issues that we have going on here in California. Along with that meeting, we'll be meeting with the Transportation Committee Head for the Congress, Representative from San Barbara County, and we'll meet with our representative who is also on the Transportation Committee. In addition, the Forest Engineers ask me to come and meet with them at the end of, this, next month, January, so I'll be meeting with them and going to help over some of the county issues that we have.
Congratulations. You witnessed it. CEO Coons and Chadwick and I witnessed the crowning.
And my, my wife won the buddy award, and she gave a speech for that buddy award that outdid me tremendously, so it was, it was very nice.
All spouses, significant others deserve that type of award.
Good morning, Tim Saxton, Sheriff. I want to give an update on some of the things going on personnel-wise. Last Friday, you know, I've been talking to you over the last several months about my efforts on personnel additions to the department. Friday, we were able to attend the 124th Post Graduation at College of the Redwoods, where we got a new deputy. Jason Haslett graduated and has started his field training yesterday, so he is, he is officially on board. Saturday, coming up, College of the Siskiess, we are attending graduation for a correctional deputy. He's actually graduating from Post Academy, but he has tested with us and accepted a position as a correctional deputy. So he will be beginning, working for us next Monday in the jail, which is great, because starting the first week in January, we are sending three of our correctional deputies to the Post Academy, College of the Siskiess. They will be graduating in July and becoming on board as deputies for us here in Trinity County. So that's exciting. That will bring us up to our full staffing, we hope that nobody else leaves, of 20 uniformed sworn physicians, and I just want to say I appreciate all the efforts that the board has put forward in assisting the sheriff's office to fill all of the previously unfunded positions that we have had, and I do want to thank you and the support that you've given the sheriff's office for the people of Trinity County to provide safety and security to them. We are going to be a little bit short in our front office, one of our records tech positions was stolen to the district attorney's office by the district attorney, so we are going to be recruiting for that position. So we'll be a little short up there, the hours, what we anticipate, there'll be a little bit of adjustment to the hours, and we'll still be open five days a week, but we may be having an hour or two shortened during the day a couple of days a week. Other than that, do you have any questions that mean while I'm here? Great.
I do, I do, I do. You're not getting away. Your number 20 of uniformed officers, is that separate from your correctional officers?
That's correct.
So how many on the, that's correct on the correction?
That's correct.
Yeah.
We have 19 allocated positions, I am short on the correction side, obviously, I'll be short three coming up here in January, we currently have five in backgrounds for those positions, so, and we also will be losing one correctional deputy to the marshal's office coming up the end of January. So I will be short six positions in my jail.
Okay. Well, I like the number 20 though, that's great.
Absolutely.
And congratulations on your quick efforts on that Lewiston issue the other day.
Thank you, it's, it's, it's a collaboration. All of our agencies are working together here in Trinity County, it's the coordination that, and good working relationships that we continue to establish with all the agencies.
All right, congratulations, thank you, Jim. Hey, anybody else, department heads? All right, county administrator?
I'm going to yield my time to my council, she's got some reports on our cannabis program.
Okay. Thank you, board, I wanted to provide an end-of-the-year report on our code enforcement related to cannabis and non-cannabis items. For 2019, there was a just over 200 citations issued, an average of three violations per citation, although they did go as high as seven violations per citation. Currently, we have 56 valid permanent, well, five-year injunctions in place, some of them for a little bit longer, and we, you know, processed all of the just over 200 cases moving through, so we thank the sheriff's department and the sheriff's department staff for their collaboration on that, they've done a fantastic job of coordinating, organizing that. For non-cannabis-related items, this year we have 15 citations for non-cannabis items. Of those, we have initiated action on two of them. This was actually been a very good year for self-correction problems, both cannabis and non-cannabis, citations seem to have, have good effect on people making corrections without having to go through litigation. So we appreciate their efforts and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, any questions?
So the fines and process, what's, do we have any estimates on?
I don't, I don't, and I don't keep those numbers, that goes in-house, so, but I do know that, again, we've got the 56 permit injunctions in place, because that's what we.
And that's new this year?
Yes, yes, that is, that is the current number for this year.
For this year. And how many, do you know how many self-abated?
I could give you that answer, but it would take me a couple of minutes to pull it out. I'll show you, I have a spreadsheet that is pretty intense that we go through, but...
You can tell me offline.
I can tell you offline, yeah, you know, I would say over 50% of self-abated this year, it may even be higher than that, but again, we've had, we've had a lot of success with our citations, with the code enforcement, has done a fantastic job of communicating processes, and so we've had a very streamlined this year, and we really appreciate the sheriff's office's effort on that.
And do you happen to know, and you may have to dig this out, how many of those that were cited and settlement agreements, I know I've signed a few, actually flipped over into our program?
I'll have to get you that number, that's not, I don't currently have, I can provide that for you as well. And part of our settlement is that it requires them to either enter into a program or in the alternative, no go again, so we'd have to coordinate with the planning department to see how many actually entered the program.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, report from members of the board. Just quickly, I will kick this on. We, two weeks ago, was at CSAT, I chair the Government Finance Committee for CSAT, we talked about potential in November, some tax issues that will, could affect counties that the voters of California pass that. We also had Malia Cohen speak to us at the Board of Equalization and some of the changes they're doing. Of course, Supervisor Chadwick might have passed that to the board members, it was CSAT's 125 years. We also had some great presentations from the state's First Surgeon General, and the, her big issue will be trauma in children, and the trauma in schools, and how we, how the state will start looking at trauma- affecting kids. Seems like that, that's long overdue, and they'll be working with schools and doctors on the various aces and levels of trauma that affect children and the behavior that is a result of the trauma. So let's see, I think that, that was it in terms of my out-of-county travel. Supervisor Chadwick?
Yeah, actually, this is our first regular board meeting since Thanksgiving, which seems like a long time ago, so in Hayfork, we served over 300, 200 and about 60 people came in, and we were seated in about, well, they say it was 63, but we know we used over 100 to-go plates, so it was, again, just an outstanding event, provided by lots of volunteers and community members, and everyone's welcome, so that, that always is just an incredible, it was our 15th year, 30 shepherd pies were made at the conclusion of the leftovers, and they were all sold out.
I think that was it in terms of my out-of-county travel. Supervisor Chadwick?
Yeah, actually, this is our first regular board meeting since Thanksgiving, which seems like a long time ago. So in Hayfork, we served over 300, 200 and about 60 people came in, and we're seated in about, well, they say it was 63, but we know we used over 100 to-go plates. So it was, again, just an outstanding event provided by lots of volunteers and community members, and everyone's welcome. So that always is just an incredible, it was our 15th year. 30 shepherd pies were made at the conclusion of the leftovers, and they were all sold out on the one day that they had them available. So that was really good. Jumping forward to December 2nd through the 6th, I joined Chair Morrison, I'm trying to think of all the things I was doing there because I didn't run them down, in San Francisco. It is the 100th and 25th year, and you guys can get online and look at SCAP, the California State Association of Counties. There's 58 counties within California. We are a rural county. We, as a rural county, we are members also of RCRC, so you can look that up as well. And this year, we had picked someone to represent us going forward in RCRC. So out of the group of rural Californians, there's one person moving forward. And so that happened at the convention as well. There was many incredible speakers, mayors, all kinds of this. It's hard to decide what classes you want to go to because a lot of them overlap, and inspirational speakers. On December 9th, there was a community stakeholders meeting. This is a newer formed group within our county. It's our CAP and our COC and many of the health providers, behavioral health, local health clinics and hospitals representing. And this is fairly new. We had a meeting on the 9th and as well the 16th. And then, just a follow-up, I'm just going to jump forward because there's too many things. 12/21 this Saturday is our second annual Mung celebration, New Year. Everyone's invited. It starts at 11:00. It goes way past midnight, 11:00 in the morning, way past midnight. So please come and join the festivities at the Trinity County Fairgrounds, and it's a wonderful cultural event. I hope to see you all there.
Great. Supervisor Groves?
I was at TMC in Reading for two days. Unfortunately, couldn't make it to SCAP. We did set our agenda last year for TMC that we should be able to have that SCAP happen for us. And I'm going to give my time to Jeremy to talk about TMC and what happened.
All right. Supervisor Finley?
Oh, no, I can go.
All right. Supervisor Finley?
All right. Let's see. I attended the climate change meeting at the Trinity House on November 20th. It was kind of my first opportunity to kind of hear from some of the local youth, and I really enjoyed that. It was nice to see the, their enthusiasm on issues, the kind of focus on how to eliminate waste off the school campus, and they had some plans that were great. So that was kind of inspiring. The 21st, I had a town hall meeting in Solier with Sheriff Saxon and myself and Brian Ward. Got to hear from constituents down there about some of their concerns, talk about roads, river fines, fees, campus, all that stuff. On the 22nd, I attended the Willow Creek seniors meeting where they were discussing the census, how that's going to impact the seniors, and they also spoke kind of broadly about senior issues in the Willow Creek area extending out to mostly Burke Ranch. On December 2nd, I went to Sacramento and met with people, Elliot, the governor's senior cannabis advisor. We discussed some of the program flaws and holdups, tourism efforts to encourage outside consumer influence, and discussed some of the testing things and kind of, you know, why aren't cigarettes tested and why is cannabis tested and where's the compass? On December 3rd, went to the Junction City wildfire resource plan update, got to meet some new constituents there. It was, it was just a nice kind of meet and greet for me. On December 4th and 5th, went to the TMC. The main thing there was kind of discussing the program's needs, having the ability to make incremental changes in the flow down to 50 cubic feet per second. So the Bureau of Reclamation was there, and they kind of discussed the situation with why that's a challenge to accommodate and moving forward. On December 5th, I also attended the SKED meeting in Reading at the city hall. It's kind of the area, the local economic development area. I attended as an alternate, so it was kind of new to me. But got to hear from some of the other surrounding counties about what their economic development opportunities are like. A lot of the ones in the valley have started experiencing the business with hemp and CBD, and they had mostly only good things to say about that, and there was kind of a little promise for them on some economic opportunity. I would like to ask our head commissioner to see if it's, if there are any areas in Trinity County that could be identified as beneficial for hemp production or CBD. There's a lot of issues with it, but I think it is something to still keep on the radar and get his feedback on. December 9th, had the community stakeholders meeting, discussed a lot of the grants coming down the line with continuum of care and homeless, some of the challenges for Trinity County, just competing with wages outside of the county. It does cause issues on finding qualified help, especially with the therapist right now is a tough job market throughout the whole state. On December 11th, I went to the RCRC meeting in Sacramento. We discussed a number of things. We adopted some new officers. I tried to run for our executive committee position for region number one, but I'm a little too freshman still, so hopefully down the line, I'll have more support with that. Jerry Hemmingson from Del Norte, he's our region representative now. Mariposa switched to a district that it was in to get out of the valley and get into the Sierras. Talked about human trafficking and a program called Protect that works with the Three Strands Global Foundation. And there could be opportunity for Trinity County to receive some more funding. It's a rural program. We talked about the Proposition 13, which is a big school bond measure, and RCRC put no position on it. We got more updates on the public safety power shut-offs. It's just an ongoing thing. They're working to mitigate all of the impacts. If anyone is interested in more detailed stuff about that, I can let you know, but because TPAD is kind of outside of the P G and E issue, it's not really relevant to all the constituents in Trinity County. We got to hear from, let's see, the director of Cal Fire, and that was Trudy, Chief Porter, and he reported out on kind of their year as a whole. I think they are trying to do 250,000 inspections on defensible space for homes each year. They're looking at developing a land use planning unit. I can go out and talk to counties about specific land use issues and Cal Fire with fire safety. Let's see, this year, we had, I guess, 6,000 fires, which was down by about 1,000 fires on year average, mostly due to the long winter and extended spring. Cal Fire acquired a new helicopter, an S-70I Hawk, and I guess the advantage of this is I can fly at night and still offer fire suppression efforts throughout the night. They also have acquired seven new air tankers that will be operational for this, not next year, but the following year, 2021. That should be, it's a pretty big infrastructure upgrade for them, and I think they're trying to find out where to stage them. It's going to be somewhere in the Central Valley though, at an existing base. The 35 priority projects that the governor had issued as his executive order from his 45-day executive report at the beginning of his term, most of all those are completed. I believe I saw the last one getting completed in Waytonville. I was driving down there the other day, and you could see them scrambling to just get a lot of biomass pulled out of some of the secondary roads down there. They are aiming to treat 60,000 acres annually through Cal Fire's labor. Currently, they do 30,000, 40,000, and they are hoping that the feds are going to try to attain their 500,000 acres of treatment per year. Some discussion about SEQA holdups, some other challenges that they're facing and addressing. I think it's been a big shift kind of in the leadership with the new governor, and they're finally kind of settling where the direction's going and how it's going to get And following the RCRC meeting, I went to San Francisco and attended a meeting called Forest and Flux that was hosted by John Muir Center at the Ducky Sign headquarters in downtown. And they hosted a bunch of policymakers and scientists that discussed all the ways science is benefiting some of the policy outlines. The emphasis being prescribed burns are definitely the best way, a realistic way moving forward to control a lot of the underbrush. There's less, the smoke is less damaging doing the controlled burns than it is with big fires. So that was neat. They're embracing a lot of the indigenous techniques moving forward. And I also was able to meet the director of Ducky Sign's Impact Program, which is their new division of philanthropy. And they just started up this year, where they're doing a million dollars a year for the next 10 years. They, it's kind of vague with their program. There's no information on it yet, but I was able to talk with her directly about the likelihood of Trinity County being the county that would be interested in working with them. If you're not familiar with Ducky Sign, they're a digital mechanism for signing papers. So a lot of realtors use them. You can email contracts instead of paper. So they've eliminated however many billion pounds of paper waste over the X number of last years, and with their program, they want to do something, you know, that represents what they believe in. And so being that we're inundated with forests and trees, I thought we were a prime candidate for that. So I hope that discussion continues. And that is about everything. Anyone with questions, feel free to approach me.
Just keep us updated on the date of the installation for RCRC next month.
It's on January 15th.
Great. Thank you. Who do you want to drag there?
CA. I don't want to drag anybody, but everyone wants to go with me.
You did remind me of something, Jeremy. I forgot to mention Tom Hall was in our audience from the Shasta Trinity, the Hayfork District, and he is leaving the Hayfork District, so he is-
No, he's-
He is. He's moving to Washington. So I meant to acknowledge him there.
Do you know his wife is moving with him?
It's not my business.
Behavioral health. She's still with behavioral health. That's true.
That is true. Also, I forgot to mention at our SCAP board meeting, State Insurance Commissioner Padilla issued out the moratorium on home insurance. There's been a rash throughout the state of non-renewals of home insurance. So he has put a moratorium on, in essence, on that subject of insurance companies unable to, who, let me gap up and say that they've been refusing to renew home insurance. So I think this will put, push the pause button on that disastrous activity that they've been doing. So we'll see more details to follow on that. Okay. Moving to report from ad hoc committees, commercial cannabis ordinance amendments. As you have heard, we pretty much have been in limbo all year. Even our stacking, which has gone to the planning commission, we were ready to bring it here, but of course, we were told because of the EIR, we would have to wait as well on that. So we really don't have any other news to report because we've been in this limbo status for, for the past year, would you say? Yeah? Except for wrapping up the stacking issue. So with that, there is, until the EIR is really finished, we're still in a limbo phase. So there really isn't any much need to continue as an ad hoc. I want to thank you, Supervisor Groves, for the time over the last couple of years to adapt to the changing conditions, whether it was the urgency to the permanent, to the changing legislation and handling all of that. Obviously, the board also for your involvement over the last couple of years on the program and staff who have been building this plane as we fly, as has the state. So Supervisor Groves, any other comments?
Yeah, I want to thank you for your help in this and in location and drive to really dynamically change the county and how it's been operating. I also want to thank, and point out, Rick Tippett, Leslie, Richard, Margaret.
Margaret.
Without it, none of this could have been done or accomplished. And then, as of recently, Kim on board. So with that, I think we just kind of hand it to Kim to, to drive this, drive this functioning team forward. And it's been very frustrating and pleasurable at the same time to, to work through this process. So hopefully, we've set something in place here that has traction and has length that can keep this moving forward.
I will also add that the program was designed to help, we heard some numbers today from county council, on code enforcement. Prior to the program, it was really duct tape and baling wire, how to pay for a code enforcement officer through the sheriff department. This program has helped increase that to three full-time code enforcement officers. So, you know, that is to everybody's advantage as they continue to do their work on those who aren't licensed and non-cannabis issues as the public brings forth. So, all right. With that, we will move to federal lands legislation. Ad hoc, any?
I've requested, and this is in a roundabout fashion involved in this, but to get staff to give us an update on pilt monies and how pilt monies work and what the, how making wilderness would affect, if at all, our pilt monies. And so the CEO is working on that, and sometime in the future will give us how that program works for us, and we'll see if we can work with the congressman to make that a part of this.
And speaking of which, I think Supervisor Chadwick is still in need of some maps, if you recall that request.
Thank you. Have you admitted to my yet?
No.
Okay.
So just for those that are in the audience, pilt is payment in lieu of taxes in approximately 1905 or '06, when the federal lands were then becoming managed by the feds. Those counties within the states that had that were given payments in lieu of taxes since 80% of our land is not taxable.
since 80% of our land is not taxable, which is our number one revenue for property taxes. Those have been stagnant. And then as we've moved forward, not been paid. And so the PILT money, payment in lieu of taxes, is also tied into SRS, the Secure Rural Schools. And so you can get more information on that, but it's very concerning for our county. And Madam Chair talked earlier about some legislation that just passed. There are two counties, Alpine and one other small one, because of their population are now going to receive more money. So there's a formula. So for those of you who are interested, there's a lot of information on the internet, but it affects us greatly. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to anything else, ad hoc, federal lands guys?
Did you have anything else to add?
Jerry?
Yes, ma'am. No.
Okay, moving on to county matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters that are listed medically by department. A member of the board or staff may request that item be heard out of order. I am moving 4.2 to our last item since we have some staff waiting on us in the audience. Any other movement on items for board members?
When you say last, is that after the subsequent?
Subsequent. Um, no, just at the end. I mean, it's up to you guys. I'm good either way, if you want to.
You're the chair?
It's not up to them. Let's leave it where it is.
Then in that case, we'll move it to the very last.
Very good.
Don't threaten me. I'm kidding you.
No, I saw her.
No, he was threatening me.
No, no, I saw that.
Okay. So 4.1, adopt resolutions approving the following PACE programs and associated agreements. Number one, the California statewide communities development authority open PACE program. Number two, California municipal finance authority open PACE. Number three, Y Green Energy Fund PACE program. And number four, Renovate America hero program, no fiscal impact.
This is your item?
Yes, I'd like to introduce, what, pronounce it right, Giles?
That's correct.
CEO of Y Green, he's here to attend the meeting. And we were kind of jumbling when this would get onto the agenda, so I appreciate it happening and appreciate you being able to make the journey up here. You know, we've talked about it a few times when I initially brought it to the board. And the gist of it is that this program will provide an opportunity for landowners and businesses to make enhancements either to their structures, for fire resilience, for drought tolerance, for backup generators, for power shut offs, siding, metal roofs, the list goes on. It's pretty significant. So I felt like it was a pretty appropriate opportunity to give people the chance to utilize their, their property ownership as a means of, of making some improvements and building some equity. If there's anything you'd like to add, feel free, but if the public has any questions, I'm happy to entertain those.
Okay, board members, any questions on these items? Members of the public, any questions on these items? This item overall, or these four companies?
So the payments, when this goes through the county, is the county getting any kind of fee for processing or whatever you want to call it when it moves to the county? And is this attached to people's property taxes? What, I mean, people that use the programs? Are the monies they owe attached to their property taxes?
Yeah, it's my understanding, and I talked with Terry McFarry pretty thoroughly about this and she is supportive of this process, especially with some of the modifications they've made to the programs in the last, I believe, six years. So yeah, it is attached to your property tax bill. And if someone defaults on their, their land or is their, yeah, I mean, it's essentially used as collateral. And I don't believe Terry mentioned, I don't know, maybe you can speak to it, if there's any reimbursement for time spent on it, but she had no objections with the required amount of staff time it takes to, to handle these and facilitate.
I don't believe there's any reimbursement, but with this, with this process, you would be reassessed and your property taxes actually increase a little bit. So there is a benefit to the county because your property taxes would probably go up with any addition to the, to your home.
Hey, does your guest want to have any words?
Hi, I'm Bob Dials. I'm the CEO of Pace Funding. It's nice to be here with you all, board supervisors, county minister, county council, county clerk. It does indeed flow up through the property taxes. It's a line item of the property taxes, much like a school bond or various other line items. Homeowners pay one check at the time they pay their taxes, close up to the county general fund, at which point there's a subaccount that's set up by the trustees and that's the PACE portion that's pulled out from the county and then that's what's used to pay off the investors' finances. The bonds are actually issued through, in our case, we participate through the CSCDA Open PACE program, the first of the four there. And they actually technically issue the bonds. These are a form of sort of taxable municipal bonds, if you will. It's really an old form of assessment bond financing that's been around for decades to finance all sorts of public benefits for municipalities and sort of was repurposed a number of years ago to help homeowners be able to finance a whole bunch of improvements related to energy efficiency. Water conservation is eligible here in California, seismic upgrades. In Florida, it's hurricane resilience, so local, you know, private financing for local problems. And, you know, I'm trying to think of what else would be helpful to mention, having answered any questions. We're delighted you're considering this.
Just to also reinforce, over the past few years, the California legislature has offered you a good set of regulations in order to make sure that your providers are above board and there's no shenanigans going on. And I want to thank you for supporting that and moving that forward with the legislation.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we are big supporters of, there's a couple pieces of legislation, but in particular, AB 1284, that did things like make sure you collected income verification documents, make sure they have the ability to repay these things in the event of a backwea, from a cash flow standpoint, they really shouldn't be doing it, amongst other things. And we are regulated under the Department of Business Oversight, State Agency in California, which is just now finally, after a number of years of enacting some final PACE regulations. So in the early days, before this thing was replaced, there were some abuses. We think that those legacy deals are behind us and it's a better business now.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Uh, sir, Supervisor Chadwick, do you have a question?
Yeah, I, I was going to ask you going forward, how would someone find out about you and who is their contact and if they've owned the house a long time or if they're just buying a house, how does they know about you?
Most of the PACE programs, there's really five of us that are focused on residential work through contractors. So what we will do is develop a relationship with local contractors here in the community that do HVAC, roofing, solar is a big one increasingly, and the other measures. And, you know, we will train them. Part of legislation, there's a six-hour training requirement where we have to provide six hours of training to these contractors. And that's where the sale is done, not at the contractor level with the homeowners, at the local level. We don't directly have an outreach program to, to local homeowners or to contractors. Most everybody does.
This is not the first time this has come here before and we've rejected it before. So my question is, if this is a private corporation that's going to loan money to people, then why is the government involved? I can't go to Unklaw Bank and have it put on my property taxes. I can't go to Tri-Kennedy Bank and have it put on my property taxes. So why should PACE have the right to put it on my property taxes?
So as I mentioned earlier, it's an old form of assessment bond financing that's been around for decades to help facilitate projects that have public benefits. Private companies don't have a legal authority to levy assessments on people's homes. And so therefore, the actual entity that does that, that enters into the contract with the homeowner in the assessment contract is CSCDA, which is a joint powers authority which you obviously belong to. And they have a legal authority to do that.
All right, thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right, we'll bring it back to the board.
A motion to approve as presented. Do you want either each one separately or can you look at it as a?
I mean, in terms of the four, I prefer as a packet. Can we do that as a packet?
It is a resolution.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what you have.
Right, and a motion, anyone second?
I'll second.
Please pull the board.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Bentley?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
No.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Moore?
Yes. Okay. Moving on to 4.3. Approve a revised job description. For community health nurse one slash two effective December 17th, 2019. Shelley will lead the title.
Okay, thank you. So as Marcia had mentioned earlier today, they do have a vacancy and we are preparing to run the recruitment and we were evaluating the community health nurse one, two job description. While we're evaluating it, we had discovered there are some programs that they no longer cooperate in, participate in, and we wanted to update that it correctly lists the programs and the essential duties that these qualifications would be performing. And then also, I wanted to make a slight modification on the requirements of this entry-level position so that we could encourage more recruitment opportunities for this position. So for the community health nurse one, two, under the distinguishing characteristics, we're going to be eliminating the diabetes education in school nursing and replace it with communicable disease and other duties as assigned. And under community health nurse one, two job description, special requirements, the phrase, certain positions may require a school nurse credential, we are going to be removing that. And then finally, under special requirements for the community health nurse one only, we wanted to add, in addition, you can either have a registered nurse or possession of a valid license as a vocational nurse in California at LDM. These changes, of course, would make it a more effective recruitment process for us and more accurately describe the requirements of the position. We did reference by the union medical support.
Good to know. Supervisors, any questions? No, members of the public? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
Do it approve?
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Seeing none, so moved. Thank you. I guess you have the next item. 4.4, approve the job description salary range and allocate to the grants division of the county administrative administration department, a .75 full-time housing program coordinator at the range of N1, N183 effective December 17th, 2019, approximate cost of salary and benefits per month for a .75 FTE. Housing program coordinator at ASEP is $4,259.
And so just for clarifying, a 0.75 FTE, so it's a full-time equivalent, which means it only be a three-quarter time person. Okay. So there are some fundings that are available to the county to address housing homelessness and improved health outcomes across our vulnerable populations within the community. The current level of county staffing is not adequate to conduct the level of activities necessary to positively impact our growing homeless population, nor to address the immediate needs of households who are at risk of homelessness. So the department's requested the development of a position that would facilitate these program functions for the influx of revenue generated by SB2, which is the Building Homes and Jobs Act, as well as ongoing revenue streams that continue to support housing and homelessness endeavors. This position would assist housing placement efforts across multiple agencies, which would include Health and Human Services, Behavioral Health, and HRN, the Human Response Network, in an effort to establish a local housing and supports unit that will serve as a focal point for all things housing. This position would address the needs of persons who are homeless, at risk of homelessness, or just need some temporary assistance to stabilize their housing. So funding currently would be available for the fiscal years 2019, '20 and 2020, '21. You know, and in the staff report, I list all the revenue streams. Just wanted to kind of focus that it's not been determined that the state of California will continue providing current levels of support in the future, but the county would like, or the department would like to have a program already established and working so that if that gets passed, we would be able to continue working.
So you're not looking at filling this position at this point? You just want to have it prepared if the revenues aren't in play?
No, the revenues aren't in play. We're asking to fill the position. We just can't, we're just saying that if the funding doesn't come in for the 21, '22 year, the position would have to be eliminated. As of current, the funding is available.
Okay, thank you. So you're looking to fill the position?
Correct.
All right. Any other questions? No? Members of the public? All right, seeing none? We'll move this forward and make a motion to do so as presented.
Thank you.
All right, I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So moved, all right.
Again, what I'd like to do is after the vote. No, I'd just like to congratulate Suzie Kokum, who is our grants coordinator. When she came on, we presented the board that she would, that position would become self-funded. Right now, it's partially funded out of DOT. It will become self-funded within two years. She's on track to do that. Not only that, she's found these other grants to bring another person on that will help with homelessness. And what I'm excited about is housing, is homeless prevention portion of it. It's easier to keep someone in housing than it is to find housing for them. I don't have the numbers here, but over the Hill, when I did this in Chastity County, it took us six hours negotiating with landlords to keep someone in housing. It took us 100 hours to find a homeless person housing. So if we can use this person to sustain housing, and what we talked about is we have incidents where someone who may be instituted for 30 days, well, when they're not there, they have the rent. They come back, not only now are they coming back from their hospital, they're coming back to homelessness. Well, what we can do with this program is pay their rent while they're in that hospital and maintain that so when they come back, they have a stable living environment. So I'm very proud of what Suzie has accomplished and she deserves full credit for this.
Right. I'm just going to chime in on that. So besides all the funding, she has coordinated our, our local behavioral health and HHS and reached out to the clinics, Ranteria, and they're looking at trying to establish a single point of entry. And so our communication amongst the private as well as the governmental sector will be uniformed. So anyone within our county that needs services, everybody will be talking the same. And so she's put a lot of time and effort, she's not here, but a lot of kudos to her, not, not just for the grants that, that, which are over the top great, but just coordinating that for the first time, bringing those stakeholders to the table is pretty impressive. So I just wanted to say that on her behalf. My apologies, board, I need to take a three-minute or a five-minute break. I need some water and stretch your legs or do whatever you need to do, but.
Throw it to the pot. How about sites?
All right, we'll, and all these.
It's the biggest.
All right, we will do, happy to do that. All right, so subsequent item. Let's move to discuss or take action on a letter to the site's project authority and Bureau of Reclamation regarding withdrawal and reissuance of the draft site's reservoir project, EIR/ EIS, and to find that the need to take immediate action came to the attention of the board subsequent to the agenda being posted. The urgency is that public comment period is closing on January 7. So supervisor.
Yes, this came up at the last Trinity advisory board for Fish and Game, and it came up at the very end of the meeting, and decisions were made quickly and quietly and loudly, and I held them along, unfortunately. And this direction was given to the chair, and the chair, I believe, has, I'd like to introduce Samantha also, she's our vice chair. If you want to step up to the podium, Samantha, you're the one with all the info. You've been working hard in this past few days. The chair has gained new employment.
Yes, he just accepted a job last week with the Bureau of Reclamation, so he now has to work.
Yes, he feels that he is not, should not be.
Mr. Lee is the chair.
What?
Right, Lee is the chair.
Who?
James Lee.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry about that. And he was in the process of putting this together, and then all of a sudden Samantha's in the process as vice chair.
Landed it her now.
Yeah, landed it her, dumped it her. She's done a great job of working with our secretary, who also happens to be our deputy clerk with putting this together. And we would like to, the commission voted to put together a letter, I believe it's asking just to delay or relook at the whole thing.
To be analyzed, to withdraw and reissue the EIR. And so that is consistent with what Humboldt County decided at their Board of Supervisors meeting last Tuesday, and that was one of the reasons that our study committee was waiting on this. We wanted to wait and see how Humboldt County voted on this, so we could, you know, kind of be consistent with that. So then on last Tuesday, the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors signed two letters, actually. One was addressing the water rights of 50,000 acre feet, and the second one was saying that the EIR was not adequate. So what we are saying is just that we want to have them to withdraw and reissue the EIR because we do not think that analysis is adequate for Trinity County.
And this is related to impacting fishing in the rivers.
And the lake.
And the lake. And that's our, that's the commission's biggest concern, and they'd like to pass that on to this board.
That's a pretty big stretch there, Tom.
Which one?
The packing, fishing, the lake.
It actually was, was discussed very well at, at the commission, and one of the commissioners, you know the people that are on the commission so much, they're very, they're very good with speaking and with their information. And one of the commissioners just didn't quite get it, so this is why we're here today. And Samantha's actually cleared it up with, for me with this letter. It was, it was a kind of a contentious meeting at the time.
So basically, it's just, again, oops, sorry, requesting like the Humboldt Board did, to push the pause button on this EIR and have some data included, or at least researched more?
Yes, yes, especially with the impact of the fishing and the recreation. There was excellent information provided by several commissioners on that, yes it might, no it might not, it depends on how sites runs their reservoir, and I think that the commission would like to push the pause button at this point. And actually Samantha came up with some incredible information that I understand in this letter very much. It was fairly convoluted, and I don't think.
Yeah, previously, the project proponents said that there would be no effect whatsoever to Trinity County. So this new information, new report from Cameron says that there are pretty significant impacts, and that's actually a consulting company that's been retained by Trinity County to do the studies for that impact as well, so very project work.
So to be clear, that's not the Bureau's consulting company, it's a private one hired by fisheries?
That was, what's my question?
Where the DIR.
The Cameron, they were actually, I think, hired by the Pacific Fishlands, and.
Associations, so it's a fisheries.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, the slant would be?
Their, their staple on it was from a water quality sample, and then the commission took that from the water quality to the fish.
You see how they leak?
They leak pretty good.
Yep.
They leak pretty good.
All right, any other questions of our guest, or?
So how, how is it possible to do an EIR considering the 50,000 acre feet, since there's no EIR on the 50,000 acre feet, and there's no idea of how that water could be used, where it can be used?
Well, on the EIR that was previously released, they did not consider the new long-term clam for the clamet, which they actually used that 50,000 acre feet to offset the temperature later in the season.
Thanks. If there's a plan, nobody's presented it yet, and it has no environmental work even started on that.
There was a record of decision for the long-term plan for the clamet in 2017, I believe that record decision came out. This EIR was, the draft EIR, excuse me, was released a couple of months before that. However, they're saying that it should have been included in the analysis because it was a reasonably foreseeable change coming, so they should have been aware of it and analyzed it in the report.
But the clamet doesn't, has no ability to use that 50,000 feet.
In the past, they've actually, well, I don't know that I want to get involved in this conversation, but the 50,000 feet is promised to downstream users under the 1955 Act. And so they use that 50,000 feet downstream to control the temperature.
It is not used. The 50,000, it's never been drawn on since 1955.
Okay, well, I'm not familiar enough with that issue, so I'm not going to step into that, but yeah, that's what, the information that I've, that, you know, often it has been. It is a potential management tool, I guess.
Do you have questions on this letter?
Well, the 50,000 is a main key part of.
The sites.
Of the sites.
So if I, if I may, they actually refer to it.
Exactly.
In the analysis model, in that it was a failure to account. So what this letter is saying is that they just, and I'll just read the first sentence. "The Trinity County Board of Supervisors requests that you withdraw and reissue the site's reservoir project, draft environmental impact report, draft environmental impact statement, draft EIR/ EIS prepared in August 2017." And then it goes on and lists why they need to stop and withdraw and reissue. And what you're saying is part of the basis of why they want to go back. So what you're saying is, it wasn't done right, you need to go back and look at it, if that helps you. Thank you.
But with the problem being that there's no, there's no, you can't look at something that there's no proposal for what can be.
There's no water in that reservoir yet?
Well, no, there's 50,000 that's allotted to downriver users, but there's never been a proposal of where that water goes.
That's what it says, though. No less than 50,000 acre feet, which was allotted to downstream users. And then that act, the failure to account for the 50,000 acre feet makes the analysis model, and the predicted changes in water quality inaccurate. So they're saying that too. They're saying that you didn't do this, what you're saying they didn't do.
But they, you can't do an environmental analysis on that 50,000 because you don't know what, it could stay in the lake. It could go down the river. It could be sold to Westland's Water.
And they bring that up later, that there's no mitigated responses. So that's also, I know we just got this, and I just glanced at it, but I think you're saying, all the problems you're saying, they're saying they have those problems with. So the option would be, we accept it, which we don't want to do. So I'm, I'm in favor for putting this in because I think those questions that you have have to be answered.
Well, I see this as some sort of stalling technique done by some, for other reasons that we're being placed on in. And, and let's go to the water. Now, the reason that we're worried about the water temperature is that less water goes over the hill.
It's a little bit counterintuitive, actually, because what, the site's reservoir is proposed as a new reservoir to deal with climate change. And so what they want to do is actually take more water from Trinity, they want to shift the timing of the withdrawals from Lewisin. So normally, they have certain baseline in summer. They're saying that they will actually decrease withdrawals during summer, and that they will put, so there's more withdrawals during the winter. Sounds good, right? But actually, what that does is it increases the residence time of water in Lewisin Lake during the, during the summer, so that increases the temperature of that water when it's released downstream of the river.
So it would bring a more natural temperature spectrum than what we have today?
Well, that's a very shallow water, a very shallow lake, so it will warm the water more. And they just did not analyze for Lewisin, so we can't say at this point what that would have been.
We analyze. We have a huge graph here showing the, you know, if you're saying that the graph is wrong, that's one issue. Get it on page, let's see where am I?
But this is not the Bureau of Reclamation's report that you are citing. This is another company. So they're saying that this is stuff that the Bureau of Reclamation did not analyze in their EIR. And we want EOR, who's the project, and the site's project authority, who are the project proponents to analyze for these things, as part of their environmental, environmental EIS.
That your worst-case scenario from, from the Pacific, you know, analization.
I can't hear what she said.
Okay. I mean, we're actually, in some, some of the cases, let's say October, in a wet year, we're actually colder water. Or in a wet year, we're the same, and in extra wet, we're a little colder in October. I mean, these significance, we, we're asking for re-analization when we're just talking one or two tenths of water and acting like it's some great change. Now, I take it your point is that you don't feel that there's a problem with this, it just hasn't been analyzed properly?
There's definitely a problem, and somebody said that there's going to be absolutely no effect to any water since Trinity County, and that there is.
Where's the data showing that there is?
Is in this letter from the Cameron hydrology and engineering. And these are some of the inadequacies and misrepresentations that they, they're highlighting, which we want to see the project proponents adjust. Just examples of the deficiencies.
So we can do one, a couple things. We can continue this item a little down the road on the agenda today, or we can move it to January 7th, so the board has time to go through this, unless the board is comfortable.
They have time.
You would have to get kicked out that day.
Right.
I may still have doubts.
This, this was not truly, totally, as far as I'm concerned, as a commissioner on the Fish and Game Commission, this was not truly and totally vetted nor brought forward. It was brought forward at the very end of the meeting, around 9:30, 10 o'clock at night. And it was, it was a contentious issue at the time, and it should not be a political contentious issue for this board. It should be very clear that the board wishes to make, make a decision on it or not. So it's a pleasure of this board, that, that's my feeling regarding this. At this point, I, I could not support this from the board supervisors because it's fairly contentious, and I don't think we have enough information, even though Samantha has provided incredible information. I understand it now. That night, I did not. It was coming from a very passionate point of view.
I just would like more time.
And I'm agreeing with you, now you need to, we need to decide how to give that more time, or just either table it and move forward.
We can.
I don't know if you want public comment.
Well, what's the, what is it?
If we're going to get in this, in this, in this sort of level of dependence, because the site has potential to be a benefit for Trinity or a negative for Trinity.
And.
I think they're just asking to withdraw their EIR, so not whether it's good or bad.
Just withdraw on EIR? No problem there. Five-year process, just like, let's go away and keep your mouth.
I've simplified it, obviously.
No, my point is, is if we're going to get in this business of looking at this, then we need to throw resources behind it and have our own expert or hire somebody to give us a real in-depth analysis. And that's fine, we can get into this.
Well, clearly, we're not going to have a decision, it seems, today.
It depends on how much money we'd like to spend on this. As you just brought up, I would like to see how much it would cost to spend, we'd like to spend on this. Second, keep in mind that it is involving some of our sister counties. We don't want to upset that, upset them too much. It is a benefit, it is a benefit to who's on how, the impact.
Well, when we get into this as a subsequent item, it's really tough to, on the fly, to really sink your head into what is here, there, you know.
I was convinced to bring it in as a subsequent, so.
It was late coming, that's why it is. So what's the board's pleasure? Because clearly, you have questions, Keith.
Well, I understand, these are extremely complex issues that have a lot of moving parts, and I appreciate, you know, the work that's been done, and there's interesting stuff in there, that for us, just to kind of shoot, shoot blindly without a policy on this county on what we want, is.
This would almost be something that I would have thought to have seen from the collateral.
We really don't get into water issues at all. That's public land stuff.
Nobody shows, as far as I'm concerned.
So.
This, at the, at the commission meeting, this was more of a political item. So, so here we are in the middle of this, and incredible job Samantha, I thank you. And I thank our chair. And I thank you for sticking around today.
Right.
So this is, this is, it's the board, it's here before the board, it was, it was.
So does the board want some more time to review this?
Well, as long as the resources are going to be there to further review it in depth, but.
Between now and January 7th, I don't know.
So, you know, it's a time-sensitive issue, we don't want to get excluded from the opportunity to disagree with and comment on the EIR that's already been drafted. So in my opinion, it just, it, it keeps the door open. I don't think it formally declares our full intention with our 50,000, or the 50,000. of our 50,000, or the 50,000.
Well, so let's say we get what we want, or what they're being asked, and they withdraw their EIR, then what? We have no infrastructure to be involved in that process.
Why not? We don't have the right to...
Who's going to be that water person that's going to make comments and do that?
I feel like we have access to it. How much will an attorney cost?
Well, you know.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not an expert.
Then if we're going to get in it, then let's make a commitment to do it.
Well, this gets our foot in the door, and then we have to scramble the sign and money to give it.
Right, right.
Or, you know, whatever the RFP to put it out there to whoever's having the most qualified for the issue.
I don't get the sense that the board is, I don't know, able to weigh in on this letter. We can table it to the end of the meeting where we have some time to read everything. I agree with Supervisor Brown. It is, although I have to really spend a little more time on this, it is just a foot in the door. But maybe you're right. I won't know until I really dig into this.
So let's table it.
We do have, it looks like at least one person in the public would like to comment. So some body language there.
No, I realize that. So why table it? Just want to get an idea of the board? Okay, so we'll take some comments from the public.
Was I on the body language, Jay?
Yes.
I'm sure I didn't take someone's spot. I fully agree with Samantha. This could have negative impacts on Trinity River fishing and the fishery in general. If the water, if that's true, if the water comes out of Trinity River, which the EIR says it may or may not, it will be a definite negative impact on the fishery due to water temperature criteria that has to be met by the record decision that was signed by Bruce Babette back in the eighties. I think it was. We've also experienced a warm water situation here back in 2002, 2003, where we lost 75,000 fish to a warm water incident. And I do know that Westland Waters District, the largest water district in California, probably the United States, is going to come to us to sign a contract to give them more water than we give them already in perpetuity. Forever, this contract will be. And as it is right now, we give over half of our water to Central Valley and Downriver Concerns. So this is, you know, this is only a wide amount of water for these fish. The last three or 40 years, we've had to have full flows in August and September for the survival of our fall fishery. This is something that should be looked at very closely. Any more negative impacts to the fishery could be detrimental. We've had a restoration program here that we spent $250 million on in the last decade plus to enhance our fishery, to restore our fishery back to certain times when it was really good. That was $250,000 if it was a water park and taxpayer dollars. The efficacy of that program, by all means, is a D-plus at best, as I think Keith could probably tell you. He's on the TMC for that board. He just got a report card from someone who studied our restoration program and it was underwhelmingly positive. It was probably a D-grade throughout the whole restoration program. So to not look at this a little more thoroughly with the EIR and make sure we do not lose more water in this river would be very, very dangerous. We have global warming. We have agricultural industry here that's taking more water from our tributaries that are warming the water. And fish live between, you know, a 56 centigrade temperature and a 72 degree temperature. They live happily between there. If it gets above that temperature, the fish die. Where me and you can live in a hundred-plus degree temperature range, they can't. Every half degree, quarter degree of temperature is very, very, very useful and will keep life for fish. If we get over a certain temperature and you act like a half degree, some people do, or a degree of water temperature, it's not that much. It is huge to save them. And if we lose that degree, especially in the upper river, as the water goes down river in the summer, it starts out at X degree and as it gets to, we'll say, Wichita Beck, it is 15 degrees higher than that. And if we give water to the Westland Waters District, we may lose our cold pool in Trinity Lake, which will leave us not getting cold enough water at 56 degrees out of the dam that the record decision told us we had to do. So I think we're getting into a kind of a slippery slope here if we start to say that this project may not take water from us, the Westland District, who takes the most water from us, and we already give away half of our water, half of Trinity County's water, we give away to downstream users. Westland Waters District's hard to take a pound. Westland Waters District does not really use the water, as Samantha can tell you. They buy the water from Trinity County and then they sell it off. So they buy it for dime, per gallon, we'll say, and sell it for 50 cents per gallon. It is a money-making situation. Most of the Westland Waters District land is, has too much salt in it to grow and they do not use that water to grow in their district. They sell off our water at a much higher rate than you sell to them for.
Yeah, I believe the bell went a bit.
I heard.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Okay, great from Lewiston. First off, I was unaware Trinity County sold any water to anyone. That's news to me. I thought they just took it, including the state. So there was one thing about, said about the Lewiston Lake that I think is inaccurate, that if we, during the summertime, the Lewiston Lake becomes warmer. Lewiston Lake is not a holding pond. The river flows through Lewiston Lake, so the temperature is maintained that way. Also, I mean, this is, this is an information dump at the last minute. And I agree that if this, this should have been brought forward a lot sooner, so it could have been looked into because it's irresponsible. Even if you feel that this is a good idea and you have qualms about it, you just don't know. And to look at it after the fact is a moot point. And I'm not sure that Trinity County voting no on this is going to change anything. I mean, other people are going to be deciding on this also. Once again, we have no real say over our water. Everybody's selling it but us. Westland, yeah. I mean, they're practically a little tiny water mob now. But Humboldt County sells it, too. So they have a vested interest in passing it, so they get it because they're selling it also. The whole thing with the river restoration is a joke. I mean, there's all this talk about the water's too cold, the water's too warm. That's my favorite. You used to be able to walk across Trinity River in the low times because we used to have pools and the fish would go into the pools so they could be in the cool water. But the river restoration people are filling up the pools, actively filling them up with rock. And they're totally messing up the river. They're building fish traps. They call them side channels, but they become fish traps when the water goes up. The fingerlings go in, the water goes down, and they're stuck there. And that happens all along, from what I've seen, from Lewiston to Junction City. So this is just a great big mess. And it just seems like if there's a problem with this, it should have been dumped earlier. This is no surprise. And a document dumped at the end is suspicious in itself. I've only been able to just glance at the letter because we literally just got to see at the beginning of its meeting. And so that's kind of ridiculous. And it's ridiculous to make a judgment on right now. It's a shame that, for whatever reason, it came at the last minute. Humboldt County, and I've, we've seen them here before, they sell our water, too. There's water districts there and they sell our water. The fluctuations in the water, we're just, we're ruining the river. The more the government fixes the river, the more it's ruined. We have Pacific, I might get the name wrong, Pacific Giant Salamanders flow Lewiston Dam. I've seen them. Tell me the water's too warm. I mean, you have, they're not supposed to be here. And they're here because the water's too cold. The fluctuation, the fish kills are most likely man-killed. I mean, if you're going to have a flow go down and then shut it off, the fish don't know that. So blaming, blame it, put the blame where it should be. And it's people, professionals fixing the river. And so this needs to be looked at more. And I agree with Keith Groves. He has a bigger background in this than probably anyone else up here because he's been looking at it for a long time. And Supervisor Family's been there and he saw how it came about. And I think you guys should use that to decide. Thank you.
Anyone else? Public comment?
Darryl for the Leaderville. I just think that this probably is one of the most important things in front of the board. I mean, you're dealing with a lot of important issues, but this is probably one of the most important things in the board. And given it as a subsequent item, I think it clearly needs to have a special meeting between now. And I know it's a bad time of year and all that kind of stuff, but it clearly warrants a special meeting between now and whenever that date is, to really vet this out at a much, much bigger level than you're dealing with. I mean, listening to various conversations, I'm hearing all kinds of different thoughts processes about California water being managed by the state and counties' rights, you know, I mean, just a whole bunch of things out there that impact this. And it just seems to be kind of lost a little bit. So I think you ought to figure out a way to have some kind of a special meeting on this by itself between now and the 7th, just to really get a chance to vet it out, get everybody a chance to truly dig it from one end to the other. Thanks.
I agree with that. That's what I was going to say.
Originally, this was going to be brought forward as a public comment with information for the board to look at it and decide whether they wanted to have a special meeting forward with it, just in public comment and with lighter weight. But the powers that be changed into a subsequent, and this is where we are. I happen to agree with Darryl. I was hoping for a special meeting. I still don't, I still don't think that will suffice. I don't think we have enough information. I don't know if this county should be involved with this. As Keith has said, it's going to cost a lot of money. And I'm not quite sure which direction we should go. But this is the way we want to spend our money, so we do.
I don't, I don't know how, we're the, I think it's premature on what money we're going to spend because we don't even know. We have wrapped our heads around this.
Can we take back off of Humboldt and their information?
See, Oh Kuns, did you have, no.
No, just looking at dates, if you're saying so.
Well, is there, is the board available January 2nd?
I think we're, even at that, you're moving too fast.
We have a January 7 deadline.
I understand. This, we have in the past a framework for some sort of water policy. I mean, you're talking January 2nd. Who are you going to get to?
Or it's January 7th. So we don't have many choices. I'm just trying to throw out the five dates.
What I'm saying is, the more prudent action is to bring back and look at this in a longer term and sit and discuss how much resource we're going to throw at this. I mean, to get this letter out is probably a more insignificant part of the bigger picture of this because if our vote, one way or the other, won't matter if they pull back their EIR. But we're going to have to say, are we going to be actively involved in this as part of our water policy? And how are we going to do that? And to, or, you know, are we just going to say, who passed and is, or, excuse me for that. Humboldt, you're just going to send us your paperwork and we'll just sign on everything you do?
I agree.
So if we have a meeting, we need to discuss our long-term policy and where we want to be at and what we want to put our resources to.
We have two different ideas going on. If we want to do anything by January 7th, that's a separate issue than what you're talking about, though I realize they're interconnected. But if we wait to do, are we just scrap this letter altogether and just work on what you're talking about?
Is a compromise, we have no opinion, but we have a letter of concern?
Well, so clearly, we're not going to have something today. It's, I get this something from the board. So maybe, I'm sure Margaret hasn't had a lot of time to wrap her head around it either. So why don't we give this, we're going to kick it to you, Margaret, for a moment? Or at least for the next few days. Happy holidays. And then you can give us a little bit better of assessment, given what you've heard today from us.
Okay. What data are we looking at to come back?
We're going to have to pull the board. I don't think we have an idea. And I don't know what we'll be able to do before the 7th.
What about the 2nd?
I don't know. What is that damn?
It's a Thursday. I also have maybe my...
Okay, there it is. So, I mean, we'll have to pull the board on a special board meeting as well. If it even, even if we get to that part, we need you, at least your assessment on this whole thing.
Okay. I'll be taking that and provide in a second.
Is that okay for the board for now?
Sure, it's fine. I mean, I...
Just so we have some, a little bit more time. And thank you for the work that you did provide. It is a big item and we really need to have some moment to really get into the weeds on some of this stuff, so. All right, so we will, all right, thank you, Margaret.
Are we tabling it or continuing?
Are we going to, would you rather have a motion to table?
Uh, yes, I'll do that.
Non-date specific in the mode.
Okay, motion to table, non-date specific.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you, Samantha. And I'll tell you, your predecessor was here.
Which one?
Wendy. She would have had an epshen.
Yeah, I agree with you.
About, this is not on Samantha's, not reflected her.
Keith, you said the connection I started to have last Thursday?
Oh, I bet, yeah.
When I got him his mail.
Oh, okay. All right, so let's go to Supervisor Chadwick's item. This is the move to discuss or take action to discuss Trinity County Food Bank vehicle insurance and find the need to take immediate action came to the attention of the board subsequent to the agenda being posted. The urgency is the vehicle is without insurance. So... So I'm going to defer it to Dr. Kuns, but this item came to me very late afternoon yesterday on my way back to paperwork. And I just want to say thank you to Tina because, you know, the highways are not so good to pull over and talk. And we talked with Jeff and she, I'm sure talked with you and Dr. Kuns, and made this happen today. So, Dr. Kuns, would you please?
Yeah, it was midday yesterday that our auditor contacted us and they were going through our fixed assets and said they received from the food bank, copy of the registration and a picture of the vehicle. And our auditor said the vehicle is not insured. So we checked until it was correct. It's not insured. However, it is not a county vehicle. There are two vehicles that are assigned to the food bank that are owned by the county and covered in insurance. This one was purchased by the food bank through a grant, I can't remember the name of the grant, and is not insured, but is also not a county vehicle. So through email back in August, when I had concerns about the vehicle itself, I received an email from Connor Nixon and he explained that the vehicle was not a county vehicle. So I didn't have to worry about it. So at this point, now they're asking us to cover the insurance because they're using it for the food bank. My personal opinion, and I'll take direction from the board, is I'm very uncomfortable having non- non-county employees driving county vehicles. So what I would rather do than, uh, bring this vehicle into our inventory is actually give the other two vehicles to the food bank, and in return, we can pay for their insurance. We can come up with what it is and reimburse them for the insurance, and they have their own insurance rather than the, than the county, accepting the liability of these two vehicles being driven around, uh, by non-county employees. So at this point, what I would ask is, well, I'm recommending is, we, we figure a way to pay the insurance on this vehicle for them, and then for the next 30 days, we transfer title of the other two vehicles and do a budget adjustment, so we can pay for insurance of those two. But I would really have to see them out of the county inventory.
All right. No, I don't have a light, but I see what you're trying to do.
Just that motion.
What's that you're gonna have to do?
So can we just gift, um, vehicles?
Let it look this way.
Well, depends. It depends. And I don't know, I don't know these, are they, if they're surplus vehicles, we have the ability to provide them to non-profit or other agencies as such. I, I don't know the status of these vehicles, their condition, all that stuff. We would have to look into that, but it is a possibility.
So much older vehicles, we probably could surplus them, so I think the mileage is, is quite high on them. But that would be through county councils. If we can gift them, or do we sell them to them at a surplus? That'll have to look into when we're back.
Correct. And we could also sell them to them for, you know, such as a dollar, and have the liability off of books, which I think is the main concern. So there's a number of different options we're looking to.
So, did you have a follow-up?
No, I'm thinking.
So I know you've been working, uh, with Suzie and on their budget. Um, last time you gave us an update, I believe there was some money in their budget.
We're, yeah, we're going through that right now. Um, all the, all the receipts were turned over to Jeffrey when Mr. Nixon, uh, left the, the organization, and we're going through that, um, because as you know, there's been, uh, accusations that the county doesn't support the food bank. Um, and we're doing everything we can, and we're using county staff to review these, the, the funding, and what we're finding is there is funding in, in there to support, um, Jeffrey at a, at a living wage, and we're also using county resources to apply for more funding for the food bank. So we're applying through CSVG for, uh, $10,000 additional funding for the food bank. So with that, um, it would appear that the, the funding is sufficient to run it, and Jeffrey and his wife receive a payroll for their services. Um, I'm not gonna say how much at this time, but it would be significant increase for Jeffrey, having his wife still receive the same, uh, funding. Um, however, they probably still would need, uh, assistance with the insurance of these vehicles.
So, back to the original question here, it's a non-county vehicle, which they know.
Correct.
And yet, they want us to pay for insurance?
Correct.
So just, I, I'm not so sure. My talking to Jeff yesterday, he wasn't aware of that. I'm sure Mr. Nixon was aware, but just like Jeff was not aware of the condition that the books were kept, I am certain that he was not aware that, I, I know he knew the grant paid for it, but I think he still was under the... Okay. By talking to him, I could have that wrong, but, um, but I think that Dr. Kuns has the best ideas, is we don't, and, and Margaret too, we don't want the liability. However, at, at this time, the food bank can't, um, provide for the insurance, and I think that if that's something that we can do in our budget, that, um, it's a good fit.
What's the cost of the insurance that they're requesting?
I, I don't know. I could get that. I'm sure it's gonna be somewhere between $800 to $12,000 a year, but that'd be my, that'd leave my guess.
A hundred bucks a month, maybe.
Per vehicle, if we decide to do all three vehicles, so it'd be 36, 35 to $4,000 a year, I guess, because they are refrigeration vehicles, so not just their commercial vehicle refrigeration.
No, no, we haven't heard from the public before. I'm telling you about it.
Okay, with that...
And I will take that into consideration and maybe change my mind.
With that, we'll segue into the public comment portion of this item. Anyone wishing to speak on the silent? Oh, okay, thank you. Mine too.
Okay, Graves, I guess I'm the public today. Um, I get that the food bank's important. Uh, the problem is, it's private, and it's getting way too past that, in that hazy line of, uh, not private. Uh, it's great that the county helps with the grant money and all that. It's a, it's, it's already been brought up, we've had problems with county employees not being able to drive county vehicles when they're not on the clock, even though they're going to their duty station. So how can you have people that are not county employees at all be driving vehicles that are county vehicles? And we're paying the insurance. Who knows where they're going? I get that they're using them for, uh, good purposes mostly, we guess. We don't know what they're doing with them. Um, so it, it would be best if they were gifted the vehicles and had ownership of them somehow, including the insurance. I mean, if you've got a vehicle and you've got it through grant money and you assume that the county was paying your, um, you know, vehicle registration, why? You know? That, does that normally happen in the real world? I get there's some mix up and there's confusion and it's all this, but suppose some other entity comes up to you and goes, hey, you guys are doing this for the Trinity County Food Bank. You have, you have to do it for us, right? That's kind of what you're setting up here. And it's, it's kind of hard, because they're between a rock and hard place, but, um, it, it's just not the right way to handle it. So if you guys have surplus vehicles, that you could have people get on maybe a list to be first to, um, get them, that would be great, or however you can work it out. But it needs to be separated where you're not meshing that private county thing, insurance, liability. I mean, suppose they get into works? I mean, what if they get sued? So that's all that, right?
Okay, I would like to hear from you on the item before us, which is the vehicle, which is not a county vehicle without insurance. Where are your thoughts?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just saying on all of this, and that's what I was just saying. You, you already have something where you have, you can't have county employees driving county vehicles under certain conditions, and here, you're having, you're meshing county, private and county in a way that, um, how are you gonna, are you gonna let other people do this? Um...
Well, we haven't done anything yet. We're trying to determine the, the item before us, which is a non-county vehicle, and they're asking for help with insurance.
I know, but what I'm saying is, if you say yes to this, then you're opening it up to other people doing the same.
Here you are.
And so if somehow it could be gifted to them, and, and I'm sorry about the insurance, 'cause that's insurance we're paying. Maybe there could be grant money that they could use for that insurance, like some kind of emergency money you could find, and you just give it to them, and then they take care of it. So something where it separates the county from the food bank. Thank you.
Thank you. Answer your phone, oh wait. Thanks, Tina. Anybody else on public comment on the silent? Okay. Um, we'll bring it back to the Board.
Okay, can I?
You may.
Okay, Seattle. What, what would you, what do you wanna do?
I would, okay.
Go for it.
I would, it is something that has bothered, this came to my attention a while ago, and it's bothered me. I would like to see the two vehicles that we currently own somehow transferred to the food bank, so they're no longer county vehicles, therefore we don't, and food bank staff are driving them. They're driving their vehicles, not our vehicles, which reduces county's liability, because if you, if they have $100,000 liability...
What do you wanna do?
I always speak in, in thesis statements, so I get to the end. Um, what I'd do, I'd like to see them have the two vehicles, and we can figure a way, either through grants or through a line item, to assist them in maintaining insurance on those vehicles, through the private insurance that they hold, not the county holds.
Okay. So question, why do you, why is it your responsibility to maintain insurance on these three vehicles?
It is not, I take my direction from the Board, but it has been a, it has been a issue, uh, since I've been here. The county's supporting the food bank, and I like to all CSVG and Stewart, uh, whatever we can, but it is not our responsibility. But is it a, is it a, uh, a, a program within the county that the public seems to be very passionate about?
For the public enforcement.
Yes.
Sir Pastor Groves, had some comments you were reporting.
Well, after you'd be taking all the publics.
All the public?
Putting this. Um, I mean, I would, I would suggest, um, following Mr. Kuns' or Dr. Kuns' suggestion, and, you know, somehow, if, if legal, to gift those over, and then, I think it's not my favorite solution, but to cover the insurance on all three vehicles for a period of time until, since we seem to be involved in redesigning the food bank and, and getting it on its feet where it can function where previously it seems that it can't function by itself. Um, and then with the long-term goal is to get it where it can function solely as a...
What about a time, time on the insurance, six months a year?
Uh, what do you think, Doctor?
I think we're getting real close to coming up with a, a budget for it, so I would, I need to kind of shorten, say, six months, if you, uh, a year, but I would, but, uh, since we're in this fiscal year, and we'll start the next one, uh, six months, because that'll get us to this, to the end of this fiscal year.
I mean, we can always do it again if it exists, not under crisis.
I think we're real close to, uh, to finalizing our budget and receiving another $10,000 through grant, so I, uh, we plan on reporting back sometime in January, uh, the status of what we discovered, so it'll be a good time.
So will we need a separate item on this to, uh, on the gifting or whatever we're gonna do with the two vehicles?
Yeah, I'd probably have to bring that back and have council go through and see, you know, create surplus, then when they sell them, how that work, how's the transfer work.
So in the meantime, have they signed a, uh, notice of, like, non, gave us free rein, not having responsibility, uh, liability on these?
No, they shouldn't, because it's not registered to the county. They are registered to the food bank, so. Now, the other two...
That's what I mean, the other two.
No, we, we accept liability on those vehicles.
So can we get something like that done before it comes back to us?
How would we do that? What would we, what would we need from them?
An indemnity agreement?
Yes. So, um, since that isn't done, I'd like to see that done on the two vehicles that is under our name.
Yes, I would, I would. That's my concern, as I was saying, if, if they, if they have a fight...
And so will this get situated?
And then we have that in Keith's motion.
I didn't know he had a motion yet.
Well, we can only, the motion, the only, my understanding, the only motion that we can make today is, is to cover the insurance for the six months, and then we give direction. So I'll make that an informed motion.
Second.
Wait a minute. Nice thought. He was pushing you. So, hold, hold your thought.
Do you believe they have a motion in the second, we can have discussion afterwards?
Okay, 'cause I wasn't done with my questioning until before the motion. So back to my question about, uh, the indemnity contract. Uh, can that just given by direction, or do we need to include that in the motion?
That can be given by direction.
Okay, and then, um, you will bring the item back to us in full...
Yes.
...concept of those other two vehicles, and that will just come back to us, like, maybe?
Probably the, probably the 22nd. I hope I make that correct.
So I have a motion, a second, and I don't think I need to throw anything else into his motion based on my questions. Right? Yeah, no, okay.
They're understanding what I'm gonna do.
Okay. All right, Keith, will, will you repeat your motion, please?
That we authorize the funding of the non-county vehicle or insurance policies for the six months, address the disclaimer.
Okay, and your second? All right, um, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, great, thank you.
Just my question is, do we have clear, concise, um, direction?
Yes.
Um, on the indemnity agreement, will that hap, will that happen sooner than before the item comes before us?
So it's possible, yes.
Okay. Okay. Does that offer a subsequent item that that was on, right?
We have twin tunnels.
The twin tunnels is a closed session item.
Oh, that's right.
So, um... There seems to be something else.
Yeah, the, what we do for the year.
No, like another subsequent. Didn't we have a more closed session? We have closed sessions. I thought you had a...
One was then, we can send two open.
Okay, so we're covered. Okay. All right, so before we go into closed session, we'll go back to 4.2, appoint supervisors to represent county on various boards, commissions, and task force. I'm sorry, John.
Okay, yes ma'am. Thanks for reading the item. I'd like to make motion to table the side until January 22nd of 2020.
And why is that?
I'd like a new chair to be able to take care of this. The last time we did this, uh, this early, you were also chair.
Right, because we had no...
And we usually take care of it with a new chair. And we have no...
We have a, do we have a motion on the table? We need a second call.
A second, okay.
And we have no new, uh...
Correct, that's why we would do it, because there's no new supervisor coming in.
Not do it.
Okay. Makes no sense, but...
It makes more sense.
Um, unless you're up to something, but, um...
Always up to something?
Yeah, you are, John. Um, I don't know what, what difference does it make, because we're, we see the presumed chair and chair, um, that's where they would be plugged into, like we did before. So, unless you have a problem on that issue.
May I ask that section?
Sure, thanks.
Do we have anything in our bylaws, or whatever we call it, on how this is supposed to operate? See how I remember something.
Um, I know we do for appointments of, um, I don't know the answer to that. I can look it up for you if you'd like to, in a moment.
Sure. To my knowledge, we didn't, otherwise I would have brought it forward. So do you have a problem putting the chair and vice-chair in positions, the presumed chair and vice-chair, I should say, in current positions where it's called, that, where it calls them out? No?
I would just table it until the 22nd.
So now, January 7th?
Um, personally, I'd love to talk about it as soon as possible, because there's a lot of scheduling involved.
This is why we're doing this thing.
So, Rose, Rose, I reviewed the government's manual, and it speaks to advisory committees, appointments, and officers, and it does not have a timeframe, which these need to be done by.
Many Boards do them in November, in fact, just so they, for scheduling purposes. If it doesn't, yeah, she is, obviously, if we had a new board member coming in, we wouldn't have that luxury, because we want them having some input. So, um, you know...
This is the second time we've done it. We're usually chair. Um, when I was chair, we waited until January. Keith, I believe, was the same.
Yeah, because you had a new board member coming in. Big difference than what we're doing today.
And I'd rather let the new chair, whoever that be, if you want a new chair again, and we go look and do it. I'd rather wait until January to do it.
You have enough to call a comment before we, until we debate. So Supervisor Brown, did you have a question?
I'm just curious, um, how Supervisor Chadwick felt about this, because you were the second.
I requested that we wait until January.
Any specific reason, or any specific committee you're...
Yeah, not only that, um, I would like to reserve, while I'm not chair, to say what I was gonna say, so I'll just...
It's, it's the way we've usually done it. Um, there's been two times we have, while I've been there, both times we've been supervisor for us.
Right, because once again, it just happens to fall in the rotation where we don't have a new board member coming in in January. So we try to get these things, housekeeping items, on schedule. I know you don't have to worry about schedule, but some of us do. So it's up to... So it's up to... And I would look to presumed chair to have input on these committees today as well. So this is not some grand conspiracy of what we're trying to do. We're just trying to get some movement happening so we can set our schedules. Sure. Anybody comment on this?
Please, dear God.
We're already done.
We're done, we have our comment. What do you think January makes us?
All right.
You're supposed to go up there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Say your name, who are you?
No, you'd have to step up if you're gonna say anything.
I think you should wait until January 2nd meeting, if you're ready.
This will happen in 2nd meeting in January. No, it would happen in January 7th, I believe.
Is that 22nd meeting, or?
Why do you keep saying the 22nd while we meet on January 7th?
Stevens chair.
Okay, well, I'm assuming it's our presumed chair, vice-chair?
Someplace along the line, I got a little lost here. Bobby, you said you wanted to reserve your comments for when you're not...
Oh, I'm not vice-chair. At the next, in January. So there's multiple committees I am on presently that are not on the list.
Right.
That's one thing. Also, some of the other committees that I'm on, I think it would be a benefit if we didn't just assign a supervisory. Fire safety council, right now, there's only one individual in the county that sits on the fire safety council.
No, there's two of us. We made that correction last time.
I'm talking an individual, not Larry from Hyunpong is the only individual. I have no one in my...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I don't believe anybody else.
Okay.
I think there's things that would benefit the county if we had a rotation, the fire chiefs meeting. There are multi-agencies that it would be good if we shared those committees rather than an appointment. And so I was going to bring that forward in January for a discussion. There's the collaborative... Should have, we should look for a long-term situation with that as that is going forward. So those are considerations.
So, as I mentioned to you yesterday, that we could address these new committees that you raised the issue, either today or next meeting. That is not an issue, not a problem to accommodate?
It's not a problem to accommodate either times. I agree that we could, we could divide those up today. Or we could do it next month with the whole conversation of all the other committee assignments. It's the same discussion, you're correct.
So do you wanna, are you willing to address some of the things that are just pretty routine so we can get them out of the way and any of this new stuff you want to bring, you would bring?
No, I would like to wait till in January.
Okay. So just, for the chiefs meeting, I'm pretty sure you and I are on that.
Yeah, and I've gone to, I think, eight this last year, and they've been great, and I think they're wonderful. But I also think that it'd be a benefit to the county if all of the supervisors had an opportunity to sit in and hear the different chiefs and the different agencies, not just one or two board supervisors. I also think that would help divvy up the committees more equitably. I know that some, like Mr. Finley comes a long way. I wouldn't expect him to be there every time, but if he went to a couple, and I know he does go to the post-mountain one, but it's different when you have inner agencies. The same with the fire safety council, you have Caltrans there, you have the planning department, you have BLM, you have the Forest Service, you have watershed, you have RCD, you have multi-agencies. So that would be a better fit, a better idea for the county, for the constituents, if all of us had those interactions with those committees and not just a singular person.
Well, okay, those, that input of yours is valid and we consider it in the consideration. But I'm not sure what the deal is, because I would look to you, as you just pointed out, some of these other items that we should put into our decision-making process on these boards and committees, but... So...
I have RCRC on 15, so I would like to know if any changes are already being made.
Right.
Want to wait till the 22nd?
No, we could, the 7th, I don't know how the second meeting of the month got put out. Other than last year, because you were not present because of a loophole that you couldn't be here because it didn't follow the first Monday. So your presence wasn't here. And so that was determined at the first meeting, which was before the first Monday, to wait till you were here. So your input was needed.
So normally it would be January 7th.
So I will amend my motion, if you withdraw your second, to table this until January 7th.
I'll withdraw and amend second.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, I have a motion and a second to table it to January 7th. Paul O'Gara?
Aye.
Aye. I don't either. It's not that big a deal. But just trying to get some work out of the way. But maybe there's other work going on. Okay, so moving on to closed session. Let me make sure. Government Conference of Labor Counselors and State Litigation Number Cases One, Terrence Mine, County Trinity Superior Court, Case Number 19CB106, Government Code Section 5494.5, Conference of Labor Negotiators, County Designated Representatives, David Prentice, Sophia Meyer, and Shelley Nelson, Employee Organizations Departed, Deputy Sheriff Association, Probation Peace Officers, Management and Confidential Unit and General Unit, 5.3, Government Code Section 549545, Conference of Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation Number Cases One, Hill versus Trinity Catty, Trinity Catty Court Case 18CV0, oh, sorry, 081. And Margaret? Your closed session's already, do I need to read that again?
You need to read that.
Okay. Move to discuss and/or take action at Closed Session 54954.5, Existing Litigation, Westlands Water District. All persons interested in matter of contract between United States and Westlands Water District and find that the need to take immediate action came to the attention of the board subsequent to the agenda being posted. The urgency is that the item came to the county's attention after posting the agenda and requires court action prior to the next board meeting. All right, any comments on any of these closed session items? Nope. All right, we will go into closed session. Yes, please. Go. Okay, board met in closed session. The Hill case has been removed from the agenda. The Mines case has been removed from the agenda for today. Under the labor negotiations, direction was given, and under the Westlands litigation, direction was given. And, well, I'll just clarify it at the next board meeting. The other thing out of our ad hoc, can I add that today? So it's all in one? Okay, so something that Supervisor Rose had mentioned during the ad hoc discussion that there is this revisionist history, that was not where he was coming from, but that the cannabis program was, brought cannabis here, and it certainly wasn't. And it was in, that is the history that is out there and that we are trying to kind of regulate on the legal market. So I just wanted to make sure that was not misinterpreted, that was not what he meant during his comments. So, all right, with that, the meeting is adjourned for now.